Okay, good evening. Welcome to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for January 23rd, 2023. Before we start, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for the families and the loved ones who are involved in the mass shooting over the weekend in California and for those who are wounded and trying to recover. So we'll take a 20-second moment of silence. You know, it's such a tragedy and to come at a time of great celebration for all the people who are celebrating the Lunar New Years. It's just really shaken the community and the nation. So our thoughts continue to be with those who are affected by that and for those who are trying to heal. Okay, so, City Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
Councilmember Zahn?
Here.
We have Karen tonight as our deputy clerk. Thank you. Let's stand for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Deputy City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have six pre-registered speakers this evening for oral communications. As a reminder, oral communications is for a total of no more than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one particular side of a topic.
And let's clarify that we have that public hearing
Correct.
tonight, and let's separate that out.
Yes.
Would you do that, please?
Yes.
Thanks.
So it does not look like we're going to run into any issues with topics this evening. Our first speaker on the list is Cynthia Cole.
Appreciate a chance to speak. My name is Cynthia Cole, and I have lived in Lake Hills for over 30 years. My request today is for the Bellevue City Council to take a stand in opposition to HB 1110 in Olympia. This bill, if passed, would mandate the end of single-family zoning in Bellevue and all other cities in Washington with populations over 6,000. HB 1110 would turn over zoning authority to bureaucrats in Olympia versus our own city planning commissions. The city of Bellevue already has done considerable work to increase our supply of affordable housing while maintaining the character and diversity of our longstanding neighborhoods. Olympia bureaucrats would not know our neighborhoods. They don't know Lake Hills. The resulting hodgepodge of what HB 1110 would allow would not take into account many of the factors which created non-affordable housing in the first place, factors that the city of Bellevue knows well and would consider. Our city is well able to plan and build for all of our future needs without Olympia dictating our housing decisions. Our city council knows our community. Olympia bureaucrats do not. I would trust you all before I would trust them. Furthermore, access matters. As a resident of Bellevue, I have access to city council members. From past experience, I can tell you that my access to politicians in Olympia is very, very limited. Diminished access leads to poor decisions. We need to retain access to our city council members for these planning decisions. Let us continue to have these housing discussions as a city and tell Olympia to go, well, fix our roads, bridges, and transit issues, and leave our cities and neighborhoods alone. Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Alex Zimmerman.
The high damn Nazi Gestapo democracy fascists are mob and psychopath. My name, Alex Zimmerman. I want to speak about something what is absolutely critical. Number one, about Puget Sound Energy and why you don't have discount for senior citizen and low income. And I spoke with Ted Foney a year ago about this. For 35 years I live here, I don't hear nothing from you. You are real crook. You are a bandito, a reggaetonist, exactly what you are. Why you cannot doing like Seattle doing? Seattle doing 50% discount for senior citizen like me, low income? You understand what I'm talking? Why you don't doing nothing? Huh? Why you so quiet? Ask me. Give me question, why? And Puget Sound raise prices every year. You never stop in this. So give 50% discount like every civilized city doing right now for poor people. Yeah, that's number one. And number two, I think you are pure bandito, you know what it mean? You cut this, what is this, East Side Council? This bandito cut East Side Council because there's seven people, you know what it mean, have different opinion. You are real bandito, you are real mafia, you know what it mean? Why you doing this? I demand restore this. More people is better. Is more freedom of speech, more opinion is America. You bandito cuts East Side Council? I never see like this before in my life. I speak right now to everybody who listen to me. Stand up, America, we need cleanse this chamber from this cretina, from this bandito. It's not cretina. It's a real bandito, real mafia, is controlled by Democrat fascist. It's exactly what's happened. You need stop and doing this, something what is bad for people. In last meeting, you know what it mean? You approve transportation for how many hundred million dollars? 100 million? Half-hundred million? Why you don't approve money for low income for housing? It's exactly what I talk for many years. You need something doing right now. Life terrible, price from corporation, suck blood and money from us for everything right now. Food triple right now. Rent 30%. Why you don't help poor people? It's a 50% and totally pardon hole. Stand up, America, we need cleanse this dirty chamber in 23. Seattle did this right now. Seattle council all go out right now. It's exactly what it mean you doing this. Stand up, America. America is for everybody. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker on the list is Heidi Dean, who is joining us virtually. Ms. Dean, can you hear me? Our next speaker on the list is Heidi Dean, who is joining us virtually. Ms. Dean, can you hear me? Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can now. Thank you. Your time starts now.
Just as an FYI, the council office, Zoom is muted, so we can't hear you in Zoom land. So I'm just speaking blindly right now. Council, good evening. Heidi Dean from Newport Hills. I wanted to confer with Cynthia Cole's comments. I thought they were excellent. I also see that you're going to be discussing the legislative agenda, and while I agree with the staff that the bills HB 110, 1110, and SB 5190 don't provide incentive for the private sector to build affordable housing, I really wish that Bellevue, rather than signing in as other, would sign in as con because until the sponsors can show where and how those measures that they're proposing have succeeded elsewhere in making affordable housing, I don't think that they should be taking this authoritarian broad-brush vote across the state, and it is authoritarian, as Cynthia noted. So, one thing that I was watching this morning, and I happened to catch the Senate Committee's Law and Justice hearing, and they were discussing SB 5258, which would increase the supply and affordability of condos and townhomes for ownership. And I would really like to encourage the city to follow along with that. It sounded like it was a reiteration of a bill that had come before and not passed, and they've done some tweaking. So I'm very curious about that, especially since it would, you know, it's for ownership, which would be great. And I know we've talked a lot about that and a lot about the barriers with building condos and that sort of thing. So please follow along. And again, with this whole affordability issue, I'm going to send you a link to UBC Professor Patrick Condon's presentation that he did for the Vanishing Boise Group, which Boise, Idaho is facing the exact same issue that we are with affordable housing. They're even larger than we are. And his YouTube presentation was entitled Vancouver Canary and the Coal Mine, and addresses the fact that we aren't going to be able to build our way out of this simply. And I think that it's correct. He also talks about a partnership between government and nonprofits and, you know, the grants and that sort of thing. So that's really, I think, the way that we're going to go. It's not going to be the private sector. So thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Luba Abramova.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, and I am going to discuss completely different issue. So it's not a secret any longer that the security and safety
Mr. Zimmerman, speak for him.
Okay. It's not a secret any longer that the security and safety in the city of Bellevue and surrounding areas is drastically changed, and sadly not to the better. The shoplifting, theft of the mail, and doorstep packages, car break-ins is a daily occurrence, and most of the time, all of this goes unpunished. All of this is the result of our local policies. On multiple occasions, I personally was witnessing episodes of store theft in Target of Factory, Trader Joe's on 116th Avenue, and QFC on 8th Street in Bellevue. In every occasion, those people just came into the store, helped themselves with the merchandise, and left the store without paying, all in plain view of the staff and other customers, without even being stopped. As I learned later, you know, this was the store policy to keep the workers safe. My friend's son worked as a part-time security in Target and Factory, and he was fired on the spot for trying to do his job by stopping a thief with stolen goods, who was a well-known offender stealing from the same store almost every other day. I lived in Bellevue for about 32 years already, and previously, this kind of behavior was not acceptable at all and rightfully was punished by law. But currently, if the value of stolen goods is under $1,000, it just goes with no serious consequences for the offender. In my opinion, this is absolutely ridiculous and promotes more theft, more violent behavior, and makes life easy and pleasant for criminals. Today, I just want to say that before it's too late, it's urgent to do something to change from this grave state back to normalcy. We have a very bad example set by city of Seattle, which just a few years, as you know, was a clean, safe, vibrant, and beautiful place, filled with shoppers, tourists, and thriving businesses. But unfortunately, it's no longer the case. Even the Washington Post article named "Seattle is Dead" made us infamous for the whole world. Lots of small businesses, big chain stores
Pardon me. I'm sorry, your time is up, but you can email the rest of that to the council so we can see the whole thing. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker on the list is Shelley Carlson.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak this evening. My name is Shelley Carlson, and I've been a, my family and I have been residents of Bellevue for over 18 years. I live in the Maidenbauer community right behind Bellevue Square. And in the past few years, I have watched property crimes
Excuse me for just a minute, we'll stop your time. Could, Mr. Zimmerman, would you refrain from having a conversation while somebody is presenting, please? Mr. Zimmerman? We're having trouble hearing the speaker, so we will set the clock back so you have your time back.
Thank you.
Can you do that? There you go. Go ahead.
So, in the past few years, I have watched as property crimes in my neighborhood and our community have become a huge problem and consistently and steadily increase. In addition to the shoplifting issues, which the other speaker had mentioned, I feel property crimes seem to go unpunished and just don't seem to be anything of importance, as it continues to happen even to myself. Car break-ins and theft of personal property are on the rise and very unacceptable. I've had my own vehicles, if they are parked in the driveway of my house, broken into twice. Earlier this month, the bank of mailboxes outside of my home and my neighbors, all four, which are very expensive locking mailboxes, were all pried open, and mail and packages were stolen. My neighbor had her e-bike stolen from her garage when she left it open. Tools have been stolen from my garage when my husband's going from the front yard to the backyard during the day. I'm afraid to leave packages at my door for more than a few minutes if it's delivered, whether from the mail or from Amazon, as they often are taken, and it requires me, if I'm not at home, to call a neighbor to go grab it for me because they'll be gone. Every week, there are many reports on the Nextdoor pages, which I read and look at, mostly in Clyde Hill and a tie in Surrey Downs, of lots of cars being broken into, prowlers, and theft. I no longer feel safe leaving my garage door open if I'm going to work in the yard and go from the front to the back, or I feel bad for people with young children that play might have bikes and playing outside because things are just left for anyone to come and feel they can take. The $1,000 threshold for prosecuting is unacceptable to me in the city and definitely not a deterrent for criminals. The items stolen from my yard and my car were costly stereo components, sunglasses, and other small items that were not visible, but they were still expensive to replace, and I feel this needs to change. I no longer feel safe going to my own grocery store after dark because I've been approached in the different crime and the shoplifting that I witnessed. Thank you.
Our final speaker that has signed up this evening is Matt Arnold.
Hello, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and the rest of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Matt Arnold, and I'm a local Bellevue resident. I just wanted to take some time to raise how concerning the issue of shoplifting, retail theft, and allowing this type of criminal behavior to go on without punishment in our community. On any given night, you can walk into the QFC or the bartels over on Northeast 8th Street and be assured you can watch someone shoplift and walk out the door without any consequence. About a month ago, my wife was in the meat section at QFC, and a guy came up next to her with a backpack on his back. He removed the backpack very casually, proceeded to shove steak after steak into the backpack. He was doing this in such a casual way that my wife was not exactly sure what to think. Once he finished loading up 15 to 20 steaks, he zipped up the backpack and left the store. When my wife went to report this to the checkout clerk, his answer was that he could not do anything about it and seemed pretty indifferent about it even brought to his attention. This type of behavior has become simply accepted, and I believe this is leading us down a dangerous path, because where does it end? Criminals are empowered to steal in our city like never before. Another example is that our son frequents Corner Sports Card Store right here on Bellevue Way. The store has now been robbed five times in a year and two times in the last three weeks, and the store owner is starting to think he has to get out of Bellevue. This would be a big loss for the community, as this store is a favorite among many local teens. If we are, as a community, to continue to allow people to come into local retailers and take what they want without any consequence, I am truly afraid of what the city of Bellevue will become, as we have all seen what has happened in the city of Seattle with stores like Nike, Meridian Theaters, Tiara International, and pretty much the entire Pacific Place Mall is now gone. And if you, there's an article that I brought copies of referencing in a recent Seattle Times article about 160 other businesses that have left Seattle. It's my opinion that if we continue to tolerate or allow businesses this type of criminal behavior, it will only continue to get worse and promote further crime and possibly more violent crime. My request from the city council, which is also the request of so many of my friends and neighbors, is to address this issue now. We need more police, more emphasis patrols, and a zero-tolerance stance for this type of behavior. Please make this quality-of-life issue a priority for this city now before it worsens. Please protect Bellevue's reputation as a safe city. I look forward to future updates from the city council and staff on how you plan to address this issue. Thank you.
Just as an FYI, I'm sorry, we don't clap here. I know I let Mr. Zimmerman do it, but we go for that, so thank you. Great, thanks.
Thank you. That concludes our list of pre-registered speakers.
Do you want to ask if there's anybody in the audience or online who'd like to?
Yes, if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak or anybody joining us virtually, please raise your hand.
We've had three on crime, so we can't have anybody speak to that, but if there's any other topics somebody would like to speak to. Okay, moving on. Council Business New Initiatives. So I am asking for an excused absence. I've been on the council for almost 10 years, and I think this is my first completely absence from a meeting, so I think there's a motion if somebody would like to make it.
There is, Mayor. I move to excuse Mayor Robinson from the February 6, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have a public hearing, and Karen, would you like to, or I guess as city manager, you're going to introduce it. Go ahead, thank you.
I'll go ahead and just tee this up, Mayor, and council members. It is a public hearing on the proposed legis code amendment updating the Shoreline Master Program. And just by way of background, this was last before council on January 9th, in which time the staff reviewed the proposed changes to the Shoreline Master Program with the council. After the public hearing, staff are seeking council direction to prepare a legis code amendment ordinance for final adoption at a future meeting. Joining us tonight is the stad, director of our Development Services Department. Joining her to her right is Caleb Miller, Senior Planner. With that, I'll hand it over to Liz.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. We're back this evening, as City Manager Miyake noted from our last engagement, which was two weeks ago. And at that time, you had directed us to prepare an ordinance to remove the areas around the EBCC and quasi-judicial decisions from the Environmental Procedures Code, and we have prepared that ordinance, which is on the consent calendar for this evening. And you also requested that we come back and have a public hearing to do some conformance amendments for the Shoreline Master Program. So I'm going to have Caleb go ahead and run through the presentation this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Liz, and good evening, council members. So for tonight, staff are seeking council action to hold the public hearing, after which we will seek direction to prepare the Luca ordinance for final adoption at a future meeting. I'll note we can't be adopted tonight because we have some additional procedural steps with the Department of Ecology before the council can adopt the final ordinance. For tonight's presentation, we'll first go through the background of the Luca, including ordinance numbers 6670 and 6673. Then we'll go through the proposed amendments and the review process needed for this Luca for S&amp;P amendments. And then finally, staff recommendation how this compares to the Luca decision criteria. So for background, this is related to previously adopted ordinances by council number 6670 and 73. 6670 was the, also known as the EBCC Sunset Luca, and removed EBCC-specific provisions from the Land Use Code following the state's termination of community councils last year. This was adopted on July 18th of 2022. For ordinance number 6673, this removed council authority to hear quasi-judicial appeals for Type 1 and 3 land use decisions, and that was adopted on August 1st of 2022. Neither ordinance included amendments to the Shoreline Master Program, and so we are proposing the following to clean up the S&amp;P. First, to remove all references to the EBCC, then to remove administrative appeal paths for Shoreline Process 1 actions, which just include Shoreline conditional use permits. For appeals for Shoreline Process 1's actions, those will go to the state Shoreline Hearings Board, and then Process 1 and 3 Shoreline decisions are not changed under this Luca. Other amendments to general standards have been found in 2035, which are some of our general procedures for all land use actions, so those are also proposed to be cleaned up as part of this ordinance. In terms of our process, we are here on the night of the public hearing. Following this, we will be submitting a package to Ecology with all of the amendments and comments we have received, after which Ecology will issue an initial determination of consistency, and then council may adopt the ordinance that is, we are thinking that'll probably happen around March or April of this year. And unless there are any changes on the final ordinance from that Ecology review, council may adopt that on consent. So in terms of the Luca decision criteria, staff believe, or staff recommend adoption, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies, specifically those that encourage a reliable and predictable permit process. It also enhances the public health, safety, and welfare by ensuring development decisions are made impartially through an objective process. And finally, it's not contrary to the public interest, as it creates a uniform set of standards that apply to all shoreline properties and allows council to engage with the public on project decisions. So with that, again, I'll reiterate, we are seeking council action to hold the public hearing tonight, and then afterwards, direct staff to prepare the ordinance for final adoption.
Great. Good presentation. Thank you. So with that, let's open the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'm going to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have one speaker signed up to speak at tonight's public hearing, and that is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to ask you to put your sign down. This is a public hearing. We don't have a sign up for this. Just put your sign down, go ahead and speak.
Yeah. What?
Put your sign down, please.
Down?
Mm-hmm.
Sign?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
Because we have rules that we don't have signs in here, and this is public hearing. Just put your sign down, let's hear what you have to say.
I use the sign for 20 years every day.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Why you always interrupt me?
This is not public comment.
No, why you always interrupt me? It's my time right now. Why you doing this trick? You very smart? The high my dirty damn Nazi fascists, mob bandito. Yeah, mob and psycho. I want to speak about these hearings, what is make me absolutely sick. And you're talking about this East Bellevue Community Council. You killed this Bellevue East Community Council six months ago. How you can refer to them, huh? Can you explain to me? Is this include in your mind? Yeah? In your fantasy? Yeah, because you very super smart? It's exactly what I see here every day for 35 years. First time I speak this in 96, 30 years almost. So this a rule what is we have, and you very quiet about this because probably you did this because you no need additional opinion, you no need competition, you know what it mean? But put this in your hearing, you know? East, 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 Bellevue Community Council, who not exist for six months. Where is the problem? Who are you? You talk about sign? Why you don't talking about this BS what is you print here, huh? This Bellevue sign? Why you don't talking about this BS what is you print here, huh? This Bellevue Council not exist for six months, and this people elect by people. How you cancel them, huh? Why you did this, huh? Why you acting like a mafia, like bandito, huh? Can you explain to me? I demand return this back, and I demand what the city of Bellevue sue this crook who is this chamber, you know what it mean, and return East Bellevue Council back. They elect by people. Only people can cancel them, not you. You understand about talking? People elect them, people can stop on this. We, the people, is exactly what has happened in America for 250 years. Why you acting like a mafia, like a bandito? Them Nazis is exactly who you are. And you lady, you very good, you always interrupt me. I like you, you know what it mean. Stand up, America. This are real bandito. We need cleanse this. We need establish back East Bellevue Council. They elect by people, and only people responsible for their life. Thank you very much, my lady.
That concludes our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at tonight's public hearing, either in person or virtually? Please raise your hand.
Okay. That was such an experience. You know, this is not an easy job being an elected official, and we try to do our best for the community, and it's always interesting. So let's, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So let's start with a motion, Deputy Mayor.
I move to direct staff to prepare the Luca conformance ordinance for final adoption at a future meeting on consent.
Okay, great. So this is very straightforward. These are things we've already discussed. There are just conformance amendments. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, we ready to vote then? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. So we have two study session items tonight. Actually, three, but one, only two in presentation. So one is for information only, which is the first one, and the other one is for directions. Sir Mr. Miyaki, I'm going to have you introduce the first one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this first topic is, as you mentioned, informational presentation, and this is focused on the city of Bellevue's most recent 2022 Housing Needs Assessment. And just by a quick way of background, the last Housing Needs Assessment was completed back in 2016, which informed 2017 Affordable Housing Strategy. So joining us this evening are Michael Pottermann, Director of the Community Development Department, to his right is Tara Johnson, Planning Manager. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, members of the council. So as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, we have our presentation up. This is for information only this evening. When we did the Housing Needs Assessment back in 2016, and I was working on that directly with our consultant who was doing that work, one of the things she said at that time, which has always stuck with me, is that housing data is data-rich and information-poor. And I think that's true when you look through the Housing Needs Assessment. There's a lot of really good information in there, but it's a little difficult to pull that out. And whenever I try to read it, I usually glaze over after about page three. So our goal tonight is to make sure that we don't put everybody in the council chambers to sleep and have you glaze over as we try to hit some of the highlights of this. We're not going to go through all the details, obviously, but we want to touch on those things that we think are the critical takeaways that are relating to the ongoing work that we're doing in the department. So with that, go to the next slide. Just a quick overview of what we're going to cover this evening. We're going to get a little bit of background that we've already touched on and really hit on those major takeaways. So some of the trends that we're seeing, Bellevue, like a lot of other cities in this region, most other cities in the region are becoming less affordable over time, despite all of the good work that we're doing and others in the region are doing to try to address affordable housing. We're swimming upstream against a really strong current there. There's also a widening gap between income and the affordability of those units. So housing prices are going up faster. Rents are going up faster than incomes, and that's creating that wider gap. Also, the types of housing, and this is an important part about it, it's not just the affordability of housing, but it's also what types are available and how we can provide more of a variety of housing types, both for sale and for rent. Also, looking at what the demographic changes are and what the different types of housing we would need as we go forward in the future. And that will particularly inform the comprehensive plan and the Wilburton Study and the other work that we're doing to implement affordable housing, like the Next Right Work. And then finally, we'll talk some more about the cost burden and the greater impact, which groups are most impacted by the cost burden, which is spending more than 30% of their household income on housing. And as always, and you all know this, and we've talked about this many times, the greatest need that we have in terms of the lower income is in the 0 to 30% range of area median income, because that's an area that's not provided by the market, requires a large amount of subsidy. So with that, I'm going to, I think we've already talked a little bit about the background, as Mr. Miyaki mentioned. The last time we did a needs assessment was really to help inform that affordable housing strategy that you adopted in 2017. Now we're doing this to help inform the work that we're doing on the comprehensive plan update, of which the housing element is a huge portion, as well as Wilburton, Bell Red, Next Right Work, and other projects that'll be going forward to help implement those as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tara, and she's going to talk some more about the major takeaways and some of the trends that we've seen in the Housing Needs Assessment.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, Newen House, council members, and members of the public. So as Michael said, we're going to provide, I know we included as an attachment to your packet, our 100-page document, so not going to obviously walk you through the entire document. Some light reading when you, when you have the opportunity. We're going to be providing just an overview of some of the high-level findings and then walk you through some of the implications and how we intend to use the Housing Needs Assessment, which will be part of future ongoing policy discussions that come before the council. So a little bit on some of the trends that we'd like to highlight and that were really worth noting within the Housing Needs Assessment. Overall, what we found is there are widening disparities, both in terms of population and need, and those really get split along various groups within the assessment. What we also found and what was evident from our consultant work, like, which is typical and really representative of the country in general and the region, we're anticipating need for, to provide housing for more seniors as the baby boomers progress. That age group really has unique needs, things like universal design, assisted living, walkable access. We're also seeing, going to see an increase in diversity, as we all know Bellevue's a very diverse community, and we really anticipate that trend continuing. The implication of that relating to housing is we probably will need types of housing, like larger homes, to provide multi-generational opportunities for housing. We also found that the average unit size has been decreasing as smaller unit types tend to dominate the market. We've seen a lot of that get constructed in Bellevue as well as studio and one bedrooms primarily. But larger unit sizes are really going to be needed to provide for our additional families that live and want to live in Bellevue. Also, Bellevue is also referenced as a wealthy city. That's something we hear a lot from the community and the media, but the disparity between high-income households and low-income has increased significantly in Bellevue. A focus on meeting the needs of both, both low and very low-income households is something that we'll need to look at as part of future policy discussions. So next, we're going to touch on some of the economic trends that we, that we saw, and we would like to highlight for you in the needs assessment. Housing and income, as you know, are very interrelated. It's important to understand the incomes of residents and workers to, in order to understand what types of housing is needed and where our gap really lies and exists. So this next slide provides just an overview of the widening income disparity that we just talked about. Incomes, of course, are widening in gap. What we're seeing is there are fewer lower middle incomes and more earning either on, either end of the spectrum, so either very low, very high. While the market creates housing at the highest income level, the city will really, will need to really target policies at these deepest affordability levels, similar to what Michael just mentioned, to help the very low-income households and also help maintain stable income. So emphasis on also existing preservation opportunities. Home values and also their associated costs, whether you're renting or buying, have also increased far significantly, far more significantly than income. So in Bellevue, in the last 20 years, we've seen 185% increase in home values, but correlating that to associated income, we're, we've only seen a 39% increase, so pretty significant differential there. Next, we're going to talk a little bit about cost burden. We started out the presentation and kind of defined what that means. It's where households spend a significant amount of their earnings on housing. The way it's specifically designed, defined technically is households that spend more than 30% of their income on housing, that's defined under HUD. And so the implication here is that those households have less money to spend for other necessities like food and childcare and things like that. Also, the, that spectrum or that demographic are far more likely to be, the lower income are far more likely to be cost burdened than the general community. As you can see from this, from the slide, what the Housing Needs Assessment concluded was that about a quarter of Bellevue households are cost burdened, and then three-quarter of Bellevue's lowest income households spend, are also cost burdened, so spend more than 30% on their, 30% of their income on housing. With all that in mind, it really, it really implies that targeting under the 50% AMI, which is really the hardest, hardest housing demographic to really get funded, or it's not something that the market readily creates, and then especially at the 0 to 30% AMI level, we'll really need to target policies to assist with creation of some of those housing types. Another area that council discusses frequently, and we hear a lot from the community as well, relates to who lives and works in Bellevue. Currently, many people commute into and out of Bellevue every day. What our needs assessment found was that 11% of people who work in Bellevue live in Bellevue, which means that 89% of Bellevue employees commute from outside the city. We also have a stated goal to increase the percentage of Bellevue workers that live, that also live within Bellevue. This means meeting the needs of people who work in the city, having units that they can afford, that are large enough to really sustain their needs, also providing the right amenities and support and the right type of neighborhood to meet their needs, so things like transportation, infrastructure as well. In order to meet the needs of those who work in Bellevue, key piece is to understand their incomes. This chart shows the largest employment groups in Bellevue, so of course, computer and the tech industry, mathematical, business and financial operations are the next largest group, office and administrative support, and then so on. 11% of those who work in Bellevue fall under the office administrative support category, generally earning less than $50,000 a year annually. Someone in this category, living alone or supporting a child or partner, could only afford a 50% AMI apartment, and the market does, as I said before, does not produce these units. These need to be heavily subsidized. Without enough housing to support these workers, commuting increases from less expensive cities, so we see more people living outside Bellevue. The impact of that is we see increased emissions and increased traffic as well.
Tara, can I ask a, Tara, can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
When you say 50% AMI, usually it references for a family of four. Is this for a family of four, or is this for an individual?
This is for, this is for an individual.
Okay.
We have, we can provide that detail to council, but there's a chart in the Housing Needs Assessment that provides the AMI levels at various household sizes, so right from one to...
Okay. I just wanted to know what this one was. Thank you.
Next, we're going to talk about housing type, which really relates to different characteristics of housing, so things like layout, size, ownership, potential, and also housing choice. We wanted to touch on some of the housing types that we see in Bellevue today. This chart shows the percentage of the city's units that have been single-family versus multifamily over time. The increases in single families, such as in 2012 and 2013, have largely been attributed to annexation rather than creation of new units. Historically, we've separated, they have been separated into single-family and multifamily, but multifamily has really dominated some of the newer construction that we've seen within the city. There have been also discussions at the state level, as well as several bills that will be, you'll be talking about shortly, around missing middle housing or middle housing that get the need for providing something in between single-family and multifamily, so really providing some additional housing type, housing types and housing choices. Next, we'll cover the age of housing units. As you can see from this chart, our housing sizes are decreasing, so we're seeing, of course, a larger number of multifamily units being constructed, primarily because we're seeing a lot more density in our downtown and Bell Red, and typically those types of developments, you see a predominance of one-bedroom units. Single-family redevelopment does not add to total housing supply by unit count, because typically we're seeing single-family replacing single-family, they may, maybe a larger size, single-family that's being created in place. If we continue along this trend, units larger than one bedroom will be a decreasing percentage of total housing and will have a higher demand, which results in higher cost. Fewer families with children will be able to live in Bellevue if this trend continues. And so if we would like to maintain this mix of family types of housing, really provide for Bellevue residents and also those that want to live in Bellevue, larger units for larger households of all incomes are something that we really need to focus on, target our policies on.
This slide doesn't correlate with what you're saying. Do you have one that has the size? This says size, but it's about the age, right?
Oh, apologies.
I'm, I'm very confused by this slide. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor.
I'm thinking the age is showing the year it was built on the bottom.
Right, but it was about the size. She was talking about decreasing unit size.
Yeah, I think it, yeah, you're right.
I'm very confused.
It's confusing. So what, I think the point that we're trying to make here is that the units that were created, you see, most of the single-family units were created between 1960 and 2000. And that's a, those are three-bedroom units. If we assume a lot of those are three-bedroom units, what we're seeing is we're not creating those types, those size units now going forward, because most of what's being built is multifamily, and those are mostly studio and one-bedroom. But thank you for asking that question, because we weren't getting that point across, so we wanted to make sure that we...
Thank you. And the last slide had single-family as blue and multifamily as green, so it's like, this slide is like freaking me out.
We tried to use Seahawks colors, at least.
The next, the next focus area, we're really going to talk about what we, what we started discussing a little bit ago, which is really talking about the types of, types of community members that we're looking at that are cost burdened. So this shows, I think I need to advance. Those who are struggling to afford housing in the city either do not have their needs met, either in terms of affordability or the types of units that they seek. While most affordable housing works for single adults, it often does not meet the needs of the two other groups which we, which we know and our Housing Needs Assessment has, has really found is we need to focus on opportunities for senior housing and larger households. Nearly a third of cost-burdened households are senior households with unique needs, and many of them live alone. They may need additional support, additional amenities... They may need additional support, additional amenities and infrastructure. Or as we said, with seniors, universal design features. The age of housing also relates to housing type and affordability. So our affordable housing strategy, which you get an update on twice a year, has really demonstrated that we've made significant progress when it comes to preservation of existing what we call naturally occurring affordable housing. So it's older densa housing that's naturally affordable, does not require any additional subsidy, but is in the community. It also does not have any income restriction. Sorry, it does not have any covenants associated with it. Our Housing Needs Assessment also mapped this type of housing and overlated in areas where we're estimating that have higher risk of displacement. So areas that are at risk of being redeveloped and would push residents out of their existing units. So that's something we looked at. These areas aligned with one another and really gave us a good perspective on what areas we really need to look out for, especially as we look forward to the Comprehensive Plan periodic update. The picture on the right, the Ilahi Apartments, that was something that came before council, where the city provided additional funding to help preserve that at the 0% to 30% AMI level. And in addition, as part of the periodic update work, we're also undertaking an equity and a displacement analysis. So as we work through the environmental impact statement process, we'll be evaluating all our land use map changes and assessing it against displacement risk and trying to ensure that we have policies in place that address some of those displacement issues.
Another one of our fun graphs.
This doesn't, this differentiates by renter and owner, so not single-family, multifamily. Homeownership is something we also hear about and discuss frequently at City Council, also hear about a lot from the community. It's also an important factor for housing type. Ownership builds generational wealth and stability. There's a significant disparity in homeownership households of different races. So white households in Bellevue are more than twice as likely to own their home as black households. Several policies may be able to support additional homeownership opportunities, particularly targeting some of our underrepresented groups. Some unit types are also more conducive to ownership opportunities, currently just based on the existing cost of housing. So that's where middle housing is so critical, things like townhomes or other multifamily types of housing. In addition, the Housing Needs Assessment also found that black and Hispanic households are most likely to be cost burdened than other households and may need targeted outreach and opportunities for homeownership. This next graph really looks at a change in households and really looks at what's happened between 2000 and 2020 in terms of homeownership opportunities. So as you can see, there's a great amount of disparity. And some of that is allocated to, when Bellevue grew in the mid-20th century, most of those ownership units were primarily single-family units, which were built during that time. This history allowed generational wealth to occur for some families, but there have been fewer opportunities, as we talked about. There's been 185% increase in property values to build this wealth through homeownership in recent years. So what this really demonstrates is the types of households that Bellevue has gained as it's grown in the last 20 years. In addition, most new households are rental households. Ownership opportunities for smaller families, especially those just starting out, have been fairly limited. And then we want to conclude our presentation, talking about affordability. That is, of course, a critical piece of the Housing Needs Assessment. And one of the components off a Housing Needs Assessment is a gap analysis, which really looks at what kind of housing is needed between now and our next growth period, so that aligns with the periodic update between now and 2044. And it really evaluates at what areas we really need to focus on to really provide additional housing to address that gap. So this really focuses, the way the methodology used under the Housing Needs Assessment, we based it on a 35,000 housing unit target that's been established. And we really look at what income levels those additional 35,000 units need to be. We look at three different groups to identify housing costs for those 35,000 units. So people who already are existing residents, who already live in Bellevue. What we found under this category was there's a pretty significant gap under the 50% AMI, but especially at the 0% to 30% AMI level. It also looks at existing workers, so people who work in Bellevue but may not necessarily live in Bellevue. And of course, there, there's a housing need that varies across, right from the low income to the higher income levels. And then the third category is something we hear a lot through public comment and at council discussions. Residents who would like to live in Bellevue but do not have the ability due to affordability or other factors. And so here, we're really looking at housing need across the spectrum, both at either ends of the spectrum, at the lowest level and then the highest level as well. So following the methodology that I just mentioned in the last slide relating to the gap analysis, we really looked at housing affordability under the various categories. Gap calculated for existing residents falls into both categories, under 50% AMI, but the remaining gap was calculated based on a broader range of incomes. What the assessment found is that most housing built today is above the 120% AMI based on market trends and market factors. Middle-scale development in less expensive areas may be able to meet the 80% to 120% AMI category without subsidy. But what the assessment really concluded is there's a need across all AMI levels. But of course, as is reflected by the regional conversations too, the greatest need is at the 0% to 30% AMI level, which of course requires heavy subsidy. And then as we alluded to, there's the ongoing regional process, which some of the council members have been very involved in to distribute countywide need across various jurisdictions within King County. These are draft numbers right now, so they have not been finalized as yet and are subject to change. We also wanted to mention that it is an expression of need across the county and not setting affordable housing targets. So that's something that would be a separate conversation with council. So next steps, we talked a little bit about this. The way this existing Housing Needs Assessment, the 2022 Needs Assessment, is really going to inform a number of future policy discussions and initiatives. The Next Right Work, which just came before you. The Comprehensive Plan periodic update, which is ongoing, as well as the Wilberton Vision implementation. Through all of these policy initiatives, as well as future direction from City Council, we can really look at policy support for our most cost-burdened populations, so our BIPOC communities, our seniors, larger households. Look for opportunities for preservation of existing affordable housing. We do that, we've experienced significant success, of course, through our existing affordable housing strategy. And then really looking at policy support to enhance opportunities for the deepest affordability levels.
So a lot of this is driven by requirements of House Bill 1220 that added some specific requirements to our housing element of our comprehensive plan. But a lot of these things are things that we would be doing anyway. So it sort of, it expands on those. It's a little bit of additional work, but it's also important work. And a lot of it, we're already working toward, through the things that we've done through the affordable housing strategy, things that we're already going to be looking at through the comprehensive plan. And we've had some different briefings with the council. We've talked about looking at the missing middle, where we might put that, how we would make that work, how we might put some programs in place to create more opportunities for homeownership as part of that process. And other things that we can do to address the main points that we've been trying to make through this presentation, where we see the greatest need and the main focus that we need to do through the comprehensive plan. The Next Right Work, which is the code implementation of that, as well as some of the subareas we're looking at, like Belred and Wilberton. So with that, Mayor, we'll turn it back to you and happy to answer any questions.
Very good presentation. Thank you. Councilmember Stokes, let's start with you. Any comments or questions? There's no vote tonight, just a...
No, I think this is an overview. And I mean, I don't see any need for big discussions of this. I think we've gone over this quite a bit. And this is really, I think, a very comprehensive review of where we're going and what the basis for this is. And I think that's the whole point. It's, I do think sometimes, just looking at these, these would be hard to understand or interpret by people who don't work on this a lot. And one of them is the whole question of AMI. Why is it not just 100, zero to 100? And what is the basis for it? And the only reason I bring this is because we're talking about, you know, the public too. When we get out and talking to, it's sometimes it's a little difficult because we're talking in one language and they're talking in another language to a certain extent. But I think overall, this really gives us a lot of information and understanding of what the challenge is, basically. And it's follow-up of things. And it's consistent with our affordable housing strategy. But it's finally getting to adding real substantial and necessary numbers in it. I think that's the big piece, is understanding where we are on that. So I think it's a good overlay and a good foundation for the work that's going forward. And I think that's the purpose of this, is to outline that for us and what we're facing in it. And I think, obviously, when we get to going, working on this, and we're going to go through these and relate these outlines or the whole piece to the different parts of it, how it comes together. But I really think it helps us to get, again, renewed and to learn more about what the situation is now. I think too much in the past, we did something in a certain year and five years later, we're still talking about those numbers. And this is very good to have this up to date on this and look at. And plus, some information about what we're doing so far. But I think it really does set it up so we know what the needs are and we know what the challenge is, and we go from there. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
No, I mean, I think that, it's a great presentation. I think it's good information. I saw this presentation at Planning Commission, I think, and I got even more out of it tonight. So I think that what the data shows is we need more housing, of all types. And that the lowest-income levels are really hard. They're really hard to develop. They are going to, they do take government and nonprofit funding. They will never happen at the market rate. So 1590 money, state funding, other sources and incentives, I think are all things that we need to look at to get that developed. But I had some, so not but, period. And I had some questions about the presentation and the data. So can you go to Slide 8, please? I only have, I think, three questions about the data, so. Oh, you're having them. Yeah, you have them animated, so it takes longer. So this is the one where I thought you said that there is more need for low-income housing now than there was in 2010. But I did the math here, and it seems to me that we have, in 2010, we had 38% of people below 100%. And in 2019, we have 33% of people below 100%. So I think that's, although we have 1%, it ticked up 1% in the 0% to 30%. So, and it ticked up 2% in the over 100%. So am I reading this right? Because it didn't match what you said.
If I understand the question, and I get, sometimes I get caught up in the numbers, the population increased.
Oh, okay. So you're talking raw numbers, but this talks percentages. Okay. I mean, I'm not saying that we should discount any of the folks that are struggling for housing, but it just, what I was hearing you say wasn't matching what was on the slide. Could you go to Slide 21, please? Just go to the end and then go back, because it's like two back from the end. If you can. There we go.
21 is that one.
Okay. Okay. So this one, I thought, I thought someone said that the highest housing unit need is the 0% to 30%. But if you look at the bar chart, we need a lot more of the 120+ than we need in raw numbers. So with the 0% to 30% being the second one. Am I reading that right?
You're reading it correctly. What we meant to say is that the highest need in the affordable housing
In the affordable bucket, okay.
Is in the 0% to 30%.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I had the same reaction. Those numbers are a little bit disconcerting because we talk so much about affordable housing that we don't necessarily look at the greater need overall, which is really the benefit of doing this Housing Needs Assessment because it's not just about affordable housing. It's really looking at all of the different types of housing and all the different household income, housing needs across the spectrum. I didn't say that right.
Right. Well, and I think this slide is really good because it goes to show what I started my conversation with, which we need more housing of all types. And then on Slide 22, you talked about the policy support. And I just had a question on, that was for BIPOC, low-income and seniors. And I had a question on how we can possibly target policy to support BIPOC population, given the state law that says state and local governments shall not show preferences based on race and sex. The, you know, we obviously can, the poor and infirm, poor or infirm, we can help under state constitution. But under state law, we absolutely can't. So how are we going to find a way to help the people that need it in a race-blind way?
Oh, I was just, I was, so I can start and then, and then Michael, you can add on. So House Bill 1220 provided direction for us to evaluate. And the guidance is still being worked on through Department of Commerce relating to racially disparate impacts.
And is that one that passed last year?
Yes, that's correct. So part of that work under House Bill 1220...
Oh, that was the impacts, though. Okay, yeah.
And it includes, it includes an audit of our existing policies to really see, are there policies that have led to these impacts? And how do we address them? And part of our EIS consultant work is, part of the scope is going to be evaluating that. So we are going to have an equity analysis that supports the EIS and the Comprehensive Plan update.
Okay, so the goal for that, then, to make sure we can comply with HB 1220 and the, whatever it was, Initiative 200, is we're going to look at the impacts and then we're going to try to make sure that housing policy in the future is race-blind so that those impacts hopefully will disappear. Is that the goal, then?
That is the goal. And also, we have CPP guidance that really speaks to that as well. So our housing element update really has to address, you know, and comply with the CPP's envisioned 2050 direction.
That makes perfect sense to me. I'm like, there's got to be a way to do it. But I just wanted to understand.
There are a couple of parts to it. So what Tara was just talking about, one is having an understanding of what the existing disparity is and what the cause of that is. And looking at our policies and our code going forward to make sure that we're not exacerbating that or continuing those practices. But also looking at, and the other thing that she mentioned that I think is important to highlight, and that's the equity and displacement analysis. Because preservation is such an important part of our housing strategy that we want to make sure that we're preserving those housing units. And if there is displacement, that it's not disproportionately affecting low-income and people of color.
Got it. That makes perfect sense to me. I figured you would have an answer for it, and you did not disappoint. But yes, I'll say it again, we need more housing. Thanks.
Yes, that is the basic conclusion of the Housing Needs Assessment.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we need more housing. Indeed. Thank you for the presentation and really liked the, the, the next steps here. I mean, great inform, as you said, great information, or great data. The information is, some of it clear, others that we're trying to extract. But I think this is something we can continually go back and look at and as we get into the next right work and the comprehensive plan, plan in Wilberton, et cetera, certainly support the, the, the next steps in terms of the, the cost burden population, especially when it comes to ownership, preservation of existing affordable housing. And I had a question on that in regards to, we had mentioned the Alehi apartments. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. So are we, a, a, as part of ensuring that we maintain that naturally occurring affordability, do we, on, on any kind of cadence, reach out to those owners that own those properties to ensure that if, if there is an opportunity for us to help or, or purchase or maintain those units? Is there an ongoing program where, where we do that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So the intent with this, that was kind of the first, this is kind of the first step. So if you do peruse the housing needs assessment, there's a really interesting map that identifies kind of the locations of the naturally occurring affordable housing. And as you know, council has, has provided funding and budget for additional staff to work on affordable housing. So there will be opportunities for us to start monitoring and just build partnerships. And right now, it's primarily working with Arch and King County Housing Authority. I think KCHA does a really good job of keeping their eye open to see if their properties are coming up for sale. We coordinate with them fairly, fairly often just to see what's kind of on their radar. And of course, all the 1590 housing stability program funding that will be coming forward to council as well. Those are all opportunities.
Okay, great. Well, certainly don't want us to backside and lose out on any opportunities, so hence, I appreciate that answer.
As Tara said, we're not doing that at the city yet, but we do work very closely with KCHA. That was something that came out of the affordable housing strategy that they, they picked up on and they've been, they've been working with us on that.
Okay, terrific. And then on slide 14, just a quick question on that one. I was just curious if the, if the percentages there on those household types, has that changed much since, since, I don't know, 10 years ago, five years ago? Are, are we seeing a similar mix? And especially from like the single adult, I'm assuming that has gone up, especially downtown perhaps? Or is this mix somewhat static or is it changing and evolving? Slide, oh, sorry, slide 15, I'm sorry. I said 14.
Oh, the, for the cost burden groups?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you repeat your question? Sorry, I was-
Are these percentages changing over time or is this, has this been fairly consistent? Do we know?
I am not sure. That's something we'd have to go back and, and take a look at. The needs assessment is really looking at what our current, you know, what our current landscape looks like.
Right.
We'd have to go back and compare it to how much that's changed from the 2016 assessment.
Okay, if the data's there, I'd love to see, just see if there's any trends that, that might be interesting that, you know, we see any dramatic increases in one area or reductions in other. I think that'd be an interesting data point. But thanks for the great presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I'll say that housing needs assessment, I sat down and read the whole thing and it was just amazing. Really, really good information and very informative and helpful to have that as, I know that's not your baseline because I think you did it before in 2016, but just really helpful to have those periodically. I have a few things I want to cover. One, I would hope that we will be changing our affordable housing goals soon, more than just the units that we set in 10 years that we would like to create. Hopefully, we're more ambitious than that because all the, all that you just showed us indicates we need to be far more ambitious than that, so.
And, and that, that is not something that's in our current work program, but that is something that the council can do. And certainly, this will help to inform any discussion about that. And I know we have talked about that previously. The council has brought that up.
Are we going to have a chance to talk about that or do you want to talk about it now?
I think we can come back to you with, with more information about that and, and get some direction from you on how you would like us to approach that. We didn't really come prepared to speak to that this evening. But it, it is something that we're aware of and we, we need to work on that.
Okay, great. Well, we talked about our current capacity for developing new units of housing versus our goal of 30,000 in the next, was it by 2044 or something?
Thirty-five thousand by 2044.
Yeah. Oh, 35? I thought it was 30,000.
Thirty-five.
Oh, 35, okay, wait, I got it in my math.
Just to clarify, so our existing capacity is for 30,000, but the target that was established through, through the process is 35,000.
Okay, so between what our capacity is today and what our goal is, we're 8,000 or so units off, which isn't like the most horrible number, but it's worse than when I thought it was a different goal. We were only 3,000 off. But still, 8,000, I feel like, you know, we can address that with all the work that we're currently doing.
Yes, and, and, and through the comprehensive plan update, we are looking at different scenarios for additional housing capacity. So we're starting at 35,000 because that's our adopted target. We have to show how we can accommodate that. But we're also looking at beyond that, as much as up to 70,000 new housing units over the course of those 20 years. Because when we look out at 2050, which is what PSRC has done, we're going even beyond that. But, but by doing that, it gives us more flexibility in how we can address not only the overall housing need, but also the affordable housing need. So, and we're looking at those different scenarios as part of the comprehensive plan update. And that'll, that'll be coming back to you. That's what the Planning Commission is going to be working on and looking at those scenarios and coming up with a, a preferred approach in terms of land use. And housing is a big part of that.
Yes, great. When I looked at the needs assessment, I was shocked to see that in King County in 2020, just one percentage point between, behind the highest percentage age group of homeless individuals are people younger than 18 years old. That's heartbreaking. I, I dearly hope that we are, as a region, look, working to look at how this is happening and what we can do to address it and prevent it. That's on us for sure, as, as families and as parents, as a community. I will underscore yet again what I think is a real need for active, independent living opportunities for our senior population. We just don't have enough of those. And then when we talk about rental versus homeownership, a lot of the work that we're doing right now and that the state is talking about putting legislation in is for rental. And we have a lot of opportunity to create rentals in Bellevue. We have East Gate, we have the Bell Red, we have Wilberton. But we really, what's hard to do is homeownership and particularly affordable home ownership. And I just want to say, I did, I ran some numbers. And, you know, if, if there was a way that the state or somebody would, would do a mortgage with a $5,000 down payment, a 1% interest rate, and help families to buy a $700,000 home, which is maybe possible if we allow more than one house on a lot, still single family, but just two smaller houses instead of one mega house. That would be a 200, $2,252 a month mortgage for that house. And that's 80% AMI for a family of four in Bellevue. So I, I feel like, you know, the goals that we're, what we're striving for are not that far out of reach. And I really hope that, you know, as we think about creating housing, we're not overly focused on rental, that we can put, because none of this is easy. But relatively speaking, rental's a lot easier than homeownership. And to provide people the opportunity to build equity and have access to a home that they own. And I, I just think that if, if you're going to subsidize, subsidize on the fees of a mortgage. You know, gi- give people that opportunity to have homeownership. And I, I think that is absolutely something we could do in Bellevue and I hope that's something we can focus on. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I think most of us realize housing's important. And so I've been waiting for this for a long time, you know. In order to do anything, which is especially important things, we need to do it right. We need to figure out what do we need to do and how do we do it, right? And so part of the equation is to know what's the needs assessment is. So I'm glad you brought it back here and we got to look at it. And, but we have a lot of things already that's been going on. Last week, we talked about some of the ways to do it. And so I, I asked, you know, email, let's say, hey, I would like to know what's the needs. And he said, well, it's coming next week, so I'm really glad to see you here. But again, I would emphasize it's a what and how. The mayor has just made a very good proposal, but we need to know more about what do we really need to do? What, I, what opportunity exists and how can we influence other people who controls the mortgage rates, the money? All that stuff, right? But to do all that, we need to know what, especially if we want to do it right, we can do it thoughtfully. Thoughtfully means that's what we're talking about. So I really appreciate this. But as I started looking at some of the things that you're presenting, I started jotting down some of the questions I wanted to ask. I still would ask a couple of them. But as I go through the charts, I'm confused thoroughly. You know, I believe that 150,000 people in Bellevue, most of them probably are confused. When we talk about affordable housing, we think about, now we're talking about housing. Housing, we're talking about rental housing, it's about ownership. We're talking about 30% AMI all the way through 120% AMI. We're talking about housing for aging, housing for ownership, rental. People who are not even here yet. We're talking about people who work here, who live here. It's very, very confusing, very big. So we, some of us may know what we're talking about and we're working hard and you guys obviously do. But I think we need to really understand even among ourselves. And that's a lot of information. And Deputy Mayor mentioned slide nine. I look at it, and slide 15 right in front of me. You know, what does that mean? I don't know. How, how do you, how, we all know intrinsically. People getting older, including myself, yes, our need change. So our size, our need, our requirement change, we need different kind of housing. That makes sense. But the needs might change, but how we can accommodate the change might be different. I want to stay in my house now, it is. If I can afford it, I would do so. If I cannot, well, I got to figure out somewhere else. And if I can downsize, I'll downsize. But if I don't want to downsize, I'll be different. So it's very important we understand that. But we cannot get it all, obviously. But at least I think we have a sense of a survey, opinion, some predictability, some understanding, what would it be? Then we need to articulate that and we need to, right? And then if we get a sense, that's just what we do, we always have to make the best, most thoughtful predictions as we can. And then we'll have to shoot that as a target. Then I think the mayor makes sense. We need to know what we have to do, how do we do it? Then we have to build partnership and other things that we need to do to make sure by the year 2044, if our determination is 35,000 additional unit is in fact right, and what type of housing would this 35,000 be, right? And how people really want to live there. And if people want to work here, are they going to be all wanting to live in Bellevue? Not necessarily. You know, I'm, you know, it's always been the case. People work somewhere else and people live somewhere else. Who knows? It's always been the way. And we, you know, as planners, we some believe, well, no, they should work where they live, they should live where they work. Yes, by and large. But I think ultimately, you know, we have to understand what, you know, what is the situation that we can reasonably manage to make sure it works for our city. And I think Bellevue has proven to be very successful. We've been growing, we've been doing well, we're doing fine. But we have to see that the dynamics changing, the damage was changing, so we got to make adjustments, which is what we're doing. So I, 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 I like what we're looking at, but I would like to understand that better and maybe think through some of the more detail, exactly what's that mean? What's the income? What's the rental? And so that we exactly come up with a number. I, I don't mind having 35,000 unit, you know, by 2044. So it's a good number, good start. We can make adjustments. But I like to know what it means, how can we make changes? How do we be flexible? And let's go from there. So I don't want to lock things, just say, well, this is it and let's do it. And then when we've got it done, what may not be, right? Things will change and we got to program that already.
Fortunately, we don't have to make a decision tonight. That's the good news.
I'll make a decision based on a lot of, all the considerations, okay? Decision can be changed. It's a start. We'll do something, action, but has to be flexible. So I, I'm done. I just wanted to make that point. So I like what you're doing, but I like to understand the data getting more refined. And so we're not stuck with it and we're going to work with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the presentation as well. So when I look at this, what I see is we need more housing and more affordable housing. It's a yes and. Understanding the gap analysis, the needs is very helpful and having that updated from 2016. Because I think what, the more we understand the data and the challenge in front of us, as well as the opportunity, then we can be very strategic and thoughtful about how we go about addressing the needs in our community. When I look at the, the slide 21, and you can leave this one on. What I saw was that it was really saying that, that, what is it, 40% of the housing needs is in the 80% AMI or below. So that's from what I could see, 14,000 or so units. And 20% of the overall need is in the 30% AMI and below. So that's going to be a really tough lift. Because we know that the market is not going to build at the zero to 30 or necessarily even the 30 to 60 without support. So having that data is very helpful, understanding how, how much the income is going up, 39%. But how much the housing? Did you say 180, 185%? That's the work ahead of us. And when I think about what we need to do, I agree with my colleagues about, you know, we need to be updating our affordable housing goals, both for rentals and homeownership. We are certainly hearing the effects of the lack of affordable housing in terms of not being able to hire for retail service jobs, food preparation. We're hearing that from the standpoint of this particular slide here is showing 38% of families are cost burdened. And we're starting to see that in a drop in enrollment in our K-12 where we're hearing that there are three elementary schools that the school district is looking at closing because of the drop in enrollment. So actually having more housing stock is going to be helpful for the entire community, not just the, for the city, but as well as the school district and how we actually continue to keep a robust K-12 system in place. Because I don't think anyone wants to see school closures. I was also thinking about the fact that, you know, this is also going to mean looking to potentially the state. I think one of the items in here was, you know, how do we then advocate for the kind of investment? Because even with our 1590 money, you know, that amount of funds is not going to subsidize a lot of units. So we're going to have to be all hands on deck to figure out how we build to the deeper affordability that we need to have. And ultimately, you know, our tagline is the city of Bellevue, the place where you want to be. And we'd like to think that we're going to have the, the choices of housing stocks so that we live up to that goal of Bellevue being a place where you want to be and you could actually live here if you choose to, right? Not everyone's going to want to live in Bellevue, but currently, we can see where the gaps are in the housing stock that's been built and where the gaps are. So I guess for me, the more that we have this type of data so that we can really augur into where we want to focus on housing, who the partners need to be, it'll be more and more helpful for us. So thank you for getting the housing needs assessment. And yes, it was very helpful to have that very large document. And yes, it was, um, very helpful to have that very large document with the level of information for those of us that tend to be kind of data nerds, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for tying affordable housing into the big picture, that's really helpful. Councilmember Braxdale.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this report, um, and presentation. Um, you know, one of the things I think that's, that's been highlighted so far, but I'll just reiterate that this helps with is not just blanketly talking about housing and affordable housing, but being able to talk about who is impacted by the need. And one of the things, especially when we talk about the zero to thirty percent AMI, is that's, I think, different from the higher levels of AMI, is if you can't afford to live in Bellevue because you are earning at zero to thirty percent AMI, you have other costs that actually make it more difficult to commute to work, right? That other, um, AMI levels may not have, right? So you've got the car expense, you've got gas and other factors, right? That just add to that burden for zero to thirty percent AMI. And one of the things that I, um, will often ask is that we do engage people who currently don't live in our community. And it's because of displacement. Um, and if we're not getting those voices, then we're not able to shape our community into a community where, um, the people who are most impacted, as you've called out in the, uh, in the slides in terms of BIPOC and low income and our seniors. And, uh, I, I think we're missing out on really being that, to Councilmember Zion's point, uh, a welcoming community and an inclusive community. I guess a couple of questions. One, uh, I think it'd be really important to track, I know this is a lot to collect and, and conduct, but if we could pull some key metrics out of this that we could track over time, like more regularly, I think that would be helpful so that we can adjust our strategy ongoing, uh, to the extent that is feasible. I'm especially interested in how we can better track displacement as well, so that we can better prevent and mitigate displacement. And then, I'm curious in terms of homeownership, I, I do think we need both to focus on rent and homeownership. One of the challenges with homeownership, of course, is you have to have certain, you have to meet certain criteria like credit, but I do think it's important, um, to allow for and, um, enable homeownership. My question is, are we, do we have a down payment program or any, any sort of initiative to help ease that? To the mayor's point about subsidizing fees, do we provide a down payment program?
Um, I believe there is a down payment program that Arch has administered in the past, but there are some limitations on that. And the, and I'm not gonna be able to explain this, I, I actually understood it one time, but it's been a while since I've, I've been involved in that. Because of the thresholds and the cost of housing that has gone so far beyond the thresholds, it really, I, I don't think the program is, is able to be used currently. And there are some things that have to be done, I, I don't know if it's statutory or, or what, but there's some things that have to be done in order to change those thresholds. And I'm not sure that we'd be able to, to reach those given the current housing costs in the city. But there may be some other program, I've been reading about other programs recently that have been instituted in other parts of the country. And some of those, I think, are in partnership along the lines of what the mayor was talking about, where we can maybe work with lending institutions to see if we can establish some, some programs that might help with, with down payment and, um, closing costs and setting certain, you know, uh, mortgage rates and things like that.
I appreciate that. I, I think, um, I don't know, I just remember when I was in DC and, you know, I was a young professional, like, looking to buy. And I think I leveraged one of those programs to buy my first, um, townhome at the time. Um, and I, uh, just remember, if, if, if for no other reason, it definitely gets, um, people thinking about homeownership and trying to work toward it because they see that there is a possibility, because there are programs that make it more feasible. And the last thing I'll say is, I'd be curious, uh, if you haven't presented this already to the CCC, what their reaction and feedback, and especially the, um, center, uh, Bellevie Centers community, uh, Centers communities of color. They call, gosh, what is the?
The triple C or something?
Yeah.
Coordinating team, yeah. Communities of color.
Yeah, so, um.
No, we, we have not done that, so, um, something we, we did not mention as part of the presentation, we've presented to, of course, the Planning Commission, we also presented to the Chamber Policy Group. Um, and then, uh, the Bellevue Network on Aging, we're gonna be doing a presentation. They're very interested in, especially the senior housing issues. Um, so we'll be doing that next week, um, with them.
We'll add, we'll add the, the triple C to the, to the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think generally speaking, um, the extent to which, like, especially when we're talking about these, the most impacted communities, the extent to which we can engage those groups, I think is one way to, um, help get some ideas about how to address those issues.
We are engaging not, not specifically related to the housing needs assessment, but more along the lines of the comprehensive plan update. Uh, Mary's Place has reached out to us, and they're wanting to do kind of a focus group with their staff and then also their residents, so we're gonna be doing that shortly as well, so.
Got it, thank you. And I would also consider organizations outside of Bellevue, like Urban League, um, and the NAACP and others that have communities that meet, uh, people that fall into these communities, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. Um, we're gonna take a break and come back at quarter till.
Thank you.
Zoom, we have one more study session item. Uh, Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This next up is a state legislative update from staff. And this evening, they're checking in with the council on the latest state legislative session now underway in Olympia. Tonight's staff are planning to present an update on one of the council's adopted state legislative priorities, and that is affordable housing and land use. Um, after the staff presentation, staff are seeking council direction on, uh, House Bill eleven-ten as well as Senate Bill fifty-one-ninety. So, um, with that, I'm, joining us tonight is, uh, Jensey Atkins, our Chief of External Affairs. To her right is Lacey Jane Wolf, Assistant Director of Governmental Relationships and both in the manager's office. And to her left is, as you know, Michael Cotterman, who's gonna make this all make sense for us tonight. Jensey.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, uh, members of the council, thank you for having, uh, some time for us tonight. We are here to give you a little bit of an update on the state legislative session, uh, focusing very specifically on a piece of legislation that is in play right now down in Olympia. Uh, so without further ado, we will get going. I probably need to point it that way. We are tonight seeking your feedback and direction, uh, specifically on, as the city manager mentioned, House Bill eleven-ten and fifty-one-ninety. Uh, we are offering you a staff recommendation to take a position of other and to provide comments, uh, to legislators in a number of categories, and you see them up there. Uh, that's jumping a little bit ahead, so, uh, first we'll kind of dial back just a little bit and give you a tiny bit of context before we go deep into this bill. Uh, so we will do a quick synopsis of this year's legislation, uh, and how the session is going so far. And again, reiterating, uh, Bellevue's adopted priorities. Uh, we'll, uh, give you a little background and analysis of the bill, and that's where Mr. Cotterman will help us out. Uh, we'll provide a little bit of context about what, uh, concerns or issues or positions other cities are staking out on this legislation. Uh, and then we'll also walk through the staff recommendation that we're bringing to you for your feedback and, uh, consideration today, and what next steps would look like moving ahead after getting your direction this evening. Uh, so, uh, briefly, I'll just give you a little bit of the lay of the land as it stands right now. Uh, right now, we are beginning, we're at the very beginning of week three of the legislative session. It is a long session, as you know, uh, and so it'll go all the way toward the, uh, into the third week of April. Uh, and with the legislative agenda that you adopted for us in November, that gives us pretty clear direction and marching orders, isn't it? And is a great statement for us to use with other stakeholders, and especially with our own delegation in the forty-first and the forty-eighth districts. Uh, the couple of things I wanna call out specifically here uh, is that affordable housing and land use is right at the top of our adopted state legislative agenda. Uh, the presentation before you, while this was coincidental timing, uh, speaks for itself in terms of how relevant this is for a lot of the decision-making that is happening in, before you right now. Uh, and, uh, it calls out specifically, uh, expanding middle housing. Uh, and so we wanted to really bring this back to you. We wouldn't normally bring all the bills back to you. We are, as Lacey Jane is keenly aware, we are, uh, getting input and relaying input uh, on literally dozens and hundreds of bills right now, drinking from the fire hose, happy to do it. Um, but this one is special, this one has a specific history here with you, uh, in the last session and with the other stakeholders and with other cities. So we wanted to make sure we gave you a really careful, thorough explanation of what this bill does and how we wanna move forward. The last thing I will mention is that Bellevue was, uh, very fortunate to be selected uh, as a city representative in the Association of Washington Cities Housing Solutions Work Group that convened during the interim, uh, to really take up specifically this bundle of issues, to really try to unpack these and say, okay, what is a constructive path forward? So, uh, Emile King in, uh, the Community Development Department sat on that group and provided a lot of opportunity for us to, um, work ideas back and forth with him. So, uh, now, we're gonna turn to a little bit of analysis and background on this bill so that you have a careful, uh, understanding of what this bill does and how, uh, how it affects Bellevue. Mr. Cotterman.
Thank you. So with that, I'll find my voice and give you a little bit of overview on the, on the House Bill eleven-ten and Senate Bill fifty-one-ninety. They are identical, uh, so they're companion bills going through each of their respective houses at this point. Uh, referring to it as the Missing Middle Housing Bill, uh, requires cities of six thousand or greater or within a contiguous growth area with a population of two hundred thousand or greater to authorize middle housing in all residential zones, and that's a key part of this. That is a continuation of what was in the previous version of this bill in the last session. So we're, we're in the, in the mix in this either way. This would require Bellevue and other cities to authorize at least four units on all lots for residential use. So this would be in any zone in the city that allows for a residential use, whether it's single-family, multifamily, or mixed use. We would have to allow at least up to four units, uh, on an individual parcel. The bill also allows for an increase of up to six units if two of those are affordable rental units. Uh, and there are some challenges with that that we can talk about a little bit later, uh, but that is an, an additional provision of the bill. So we'd be looking at sixplexes as allowing those as well if they do two of them as affordable. And that would also be in all of those residential zones. And for areas within a half mile of a major transit stop, which is defined in the bill, we would allow, have to allow up to six units, uh, per lot in all those residential zones. So that does not include the affordable, uh, provision, that would just be flat-out six units. Next slide. And then the other area that we wanted to talk about here is having to do with the parking requirements. So this would significantly reduce parking around a lot of these developments. So requiring off-street parking for middle housing within a half mile of that major transit stop, we would not be able to require off-street parking within that half mile. Uh, we could do one off-street parking space for middle housing on lots that are smaller than six thousand and up to two for lots that are larger than six thousand square feet. And that does not relate to the number of units that are on the lot, simply each, uh, each parcel. So whether it's a fourplex or a sixplex, if it's larger than six thousand square feet, we'd be limited to two spaces.
All right, so that's a overview of the, some of the biggest components of this legislation. Uh, I wanna give you a little bit of a sense of where we're at in the process to date. Uh, the House Bill, House Bill eleven-ten was heard in the House Committee, uh, in the Committee on Housing on January seventeenth. Uh, and the Senate Bill is, uh, up for a public hearing in the Senate Committee on Housing this coming Wednesday. Uh, and so that's where we are in the process. The process is, uh, both moving very quickly and has a long way yet to go. Uh, a couple of notes about how this bill differs from last year. It does have the same prime sponsor, uh, on that, both the House Bill from last year and this one, Representative Bateman. Um, House Bill seventeen-eighty-two, the bill, uh, that you saw last year, it exempted cities under twenty thousand, uh, population, and so it didn't apply to those, uh, this year that are between six thousand and twenty thousand. So it captures or applies to more cities statewide. The, uh, bill last year had, this one has an additional allowance for affordable housing because last year just dealt with fourplexes, this one goes all the way up to six if affordability, uh, requirements are met, both for rental and for owner-occupied units. Uh, Mr. Cotterman reme, um, mentioned that earlier. Um, and then, uh, finally, last year's bill offered a, um, minimum net density option uh, of an overall, uh, gross, uh, average of thirty-three dwelling units per acre. This bill doesn't have anything, any component like that, so it does not have that, uh, in it as well. Moving right along, uh, we wanna give you a little bit of framing as you take, uh, this under consideration tonight, uh, where other cities are, uh, in relative position to one another on this legislation. Uh, one of the things that is also different, uh, this year, last year was a short session. This is a pretty big piece of legislation to take up in a short session, and cities were caught a little bit flat-footed. Uh, this year, cities have had more time, uh, in the intervening months to really consider, uh, how they feel about this legislation. And there is, as you can see here, uh, a bit of a spectrum of where cities lie. There are, sure, I, I'm positive there are other cities that are not listed up here. Uh, but this is, uh, a number of the cities who did weigh in, uh, in some form on the House hearing, just to give you a sense that there, uh, is a variety of, uh, evaluation of the positions here. You'll see, um, across the state, a lot of variation, both in the, uh, cities that are in support, that are in opposition, and are weighing in other. Um, I will mention, uh, while we're on this slide, some of the themes that are coming up from some of your colleagues at other cities. Uh, there are a number of concerns, and they kind of cluster together depending on the cities that are talking about the legislation, but there's a lot of recurring themes that you'll hear. Uh, one of the main themes is around having the same number of units per lot citywide in residential areas versus focused or tiered levels of upzoning. Uh, there's also concern about displacement of existing, uh, naturally occurring affordable housing uh, by incentivizing the redevelopment of existing affordable homes. Uh, there are also concerns around, um, increasing density in areas that either have not frequent, don't have frequent transit, or have no transit at all in the case of some of the cities where there is not a, uh, transit agency serving those neighborhoods. Um, deficiency in utilities, that's addressed a little bit in the bill, but for cities who do not have exclusive control over utility provision, uh, there is a little bit of a, um, you can petition for an extension, uh, which is outlined in the bill. But again, for cities who just simply cannot cause it to occur, where there's a lack of sewer water or stormwater, that's a concern. Um, and then, uh, also concerned about the parking, uh, requirements, uh, and not allowing a certain amount of off-street parking for some of the lower-income cities or cities that have a larger proportion of lower-income families and individuals who rely on their cars, uh, as a means for their livelihood. They're very concerned that this could have a, uh, unfortunate impact on their ability to just maintain their, um, employment. Uh, and then improved clarity around the grandfathering clause. There's a section in the bill that talks about how cities, uh, who have taken substantially similar actions uh, can be, uh, kind of grandfathered in. We wanna get some better definition and clarity. And we're joined, a number of the cities, particularly in that other column, are the ones who have echoed a lot of these concerns and reservations and are asking, uh, for amendments. I'm gonna turn to my colleague Lacey Jane, who will walk through the staff recommendation that we would like you to consider this evening.
Thank you, Jensey. Uh, we know that this is a big bill with a lot of policy elements in it, and the legislature, of course, moves quickly. So we really appreciate the time that you've given us tonight to come to you and talk through the bill, make sure that we're, um, weighing in and, um, we're on the same page with council and how you all would like us to proceed. So to give us a starting point for your conversation and your feedback tonight, staff used your two thousand twenty-three state legislative agenda and other adopted policies to develop a staff recommendation. So I'm gonna walk you through that next. As Jensey mentioned earlier, staff recommends that council weigh in on this bill as other and submit comments on four priority topic areas. These are zoning requirements, density near major transit, parking requirements, and affordability. So these are the four priorities we, we recommend weighing in on, along with our status as other. So I'm gonna walk you through each of these four, and then we would love to take your feedback and hear from you. feedback and hear from you. So starting with the zoning requirements, you all, as you all know, middle housing is intended to have the size, shape, and character of single-family housing. It's intended to blend in. However, five plexes, six plexes, cottage housing, and courtyard apartments all differ from single-family housing, especially in terms of size, layout, the way they look. Um, they just don't have that combat compatibility and the aesthetics that we've heard council speaking about recently as you all work on your next right work. So staff recommends we request an amendment to omit those housing types, five plexes, six plexes, cottage housing, and courtyard housing, courtyard apartments, excuse me, from this bill. The second priority topic area for comment is density near major transit. Bellevue, of course, has a transit-oriented growth strategy, and we're planning for much higher density near most future light rail stations. This bill seems to underutilize TOD potential, especially near light rail stations and bus rapid transit stops. So staff recommends asking legislators to take advantage of those high potential areas as Bellevue plans to do. The third topic area is parking requirements. Bellevue uses a scaled approach to parking requirements based on proximity to transit. And this bill takes a pretty cut-and-dry approach, um, which Michael went through earlier, um, really restricting cities from requiring parking for middle housing within a half-mile transit and the other requirements that he noted before. So we recommend asking legislators to take a more scaled approach and, of course, really consider a half-mile walking distance instead of just a straight half-mile. I think we all know that, um, that walking distance can really make a difference when you're trying to commute by, by transit. The last topic area is affordability. Bellevue has a lot of experience incentivizing affordable housing, and based on that experience, staff does not believe that this bill offers enough incentives to build significant affordable housing. So therefore, staff recommends Bellevue comment on this, on the significant state investment needed to aid cities and nonprofits to create and preserve low-income housing units. So I'm handing it back to Genesi to wrap us up.
Thank you, Lacey Jane. In terms of the process ahead, uh, we would like to get your direction feedback this evening. Uh, what we would do next is provide comments and weigh in at the, as the bills proceed, which for the Senate Bill, uh, will be the public hearing held on, uh, Wednesday afternoon this week, uh, as well as at future bill hearings. We want to work with the sponsors and the stakeholders, uh, on amendments. We understand right now that that is already starting to sh, take shape this week. Uh, there was a large stakeholder meeting just this past Friday, so we're, our timing is really good to come in front of you and get your direction to go forward. And then if needed, we would come back to council to get further direction, but our hope is to get really clear feedback from you today that would give us really, um, a clear set of marching orders to work with the bills as they continue to change. Um, a couple of notes here about the dates ahead. Uh, we are in the kind of first chunk of the legislative session where bills are getting introduced and heard at a very, very rapid clip. That will really change dramatically once we get to the middle of February. That's when we get to what we call the first set of cutoffs, uh, for the policy committees. That cutoff is on February 17th, and then a week later on the 24th for the fiscal committees, so appropriations, transportation, ways and means, capital budget. Uh, and then all of those bills that make it out of the House will have to pass the House floor by March 8th, and likewise, the Senate bills have to get out of the Senate floor, uh, by March 8th as well. And then it starts to move a little more quickly, uh, from then. You have just over a month for those bills to then be considered by the opposite chamber, and then they move pretty quickly to resolve what's left and what's still alive at that point. So again, with your, uh, direction this evening, we really want to roll up our sleeves, uh, and get at the table and try to improve this bill as long as this bill is alive. Uh, and that is really our objective tonight is to get your feedback, hear your conversation, uh, and really have a, a very clear set of objectives and priorities, uh, as we move, uh, forward with the other stakeholders and the sponsors. Uh, one of the first things we would do once we have an articulated position is work with our own members in the 41st and the 48th districts to make sure they know, because I know they're keenly interested, uh, not only in the next right work, um, activity and actions that you're taking, but in how all these things come together. Uh, so we would be happy to field any questions that you might have, uh, and then, of course, take your direction if you so choose tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Councilmember Barxale, let's start with you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation. Glad this is coming back this year for us to talk about. Had a couple of questions. Just to be clear, this bill authorizes but does not require the development of, right? So it, it allows for?
It requires that we authorize.
Requires that we authorize.
Correct.
Correct. We would, we would have to allow for, in, in all residential zones. Our zoning would have to allow for more than single-family.
Yes. Got it. Um, which makes sense. So I guess, um, uh, when I think about the, uh, I mean, to me, what that means is that sing, like, people aren't just gonna go tear down single-family homes, but it does put us in the direction of getting more, um, uh, of the housing that we need, uh, throughout our community. Um, so I guess I'll, I'll touch on the four areas that you mentioned. So for the minimum zoning requirements, and I would say generally, um, I understand the recommendation to, to go with other. I guess I'm curious too about, uh, if we agree with the, um, the direction of it, right? Can we not say pro, but then provide feedback as well? Is kind of what I'm curious about.
That, that's another, that's another option that you all have this evening, um, is you could choose to go that direction instead. I think, given the number of concerns that we still have with the current version of the bill, uh, I think our position probably aligns more with the other cities who have currently weighed in as other. Uh, and that gives us, we hope, that by taking a position of other and providing some substantial comments, that we can improve the bill. It would, you know, it is absolutely a possibility that the group, the bill gets improved to a point where we are clearly in support of it. Um, but at this point, uh, the bill that is presented right now or as it was introduced, I think, still gives us a number of places where we want to seek changes. Uh, and other gets us at the table to see if the proponents are willing to accept the amendments that we're hoping to, um, get incorporated. I hope that answers.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and then, as I understood it, from, uh, the zoning perspective, like, cities would still have the ability, as long as it doesn't con, uh, contrast with the law, to, uh, kind of to your point, I think, Lacey Jane, about, uh, some of these may not fitting, or maybe you mentioned Genesi, but fitting within the, um, aesthetics of the community. I mean, there are still, there is still some flexibility in the bill for, um, design from standards, from what I read. Yes.
The, my, my read of the bill is that, yes, we could put design standards or, or other guidelines in place. They would have to apply to the single-family as well. So we could only apply it across the board. We wouldn't be able to apply it just to non-single-family.
Okay. Um, so going to the density near transit, um, I think that was the next one. Uh, I, I support increasing the, of, an amount of housing near transit, not, not necessarily an exclusion of the first area, right? But obviously, I would support that. And then in terms of parking requirements, I mean, I hear you on the scaled approach. We've, I mean, but if, the reason we've taken direction to decrease parking minimums was because of the cost impact on development. And the reason for the, uh, parking requirements provision in this bill is for a similar reason, right? To lower the cost of, I mean, and there are cities, sorry, I always reference DC, where you do have, you know, maybe quad or sec, six plexes that don't have off-street, um, off-street parking, and there is sufficient parking, especially if you take strategies like zone parking, right? Or for residential communities. Uh, I guess I'm a little confused about the, uh, affordability. Is that because of the two affordable units i, if you're building a six-plex? Or is, is that what you're referencing there and that there are better approaches to getting affordable units compared to that? That's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Uh, yes, thank you. I'm very glad that you brought this before us, because I think that this is a very important bill and getting our feedback so we can better understand when we craft our, um, state-led agenda, when we get to these nuances, what is it that we're trying to achieve is really important. I mean, just before this one, we heard about the affordable housing gap in our city, and this work is gonna be a key part of that. You know, I will still think there's an urgency to getting this work done. What I hear you saying is a recommendation, um, of other actually gets us a seat at the table. And so I guess to Councilmember Barxale's point, so if we sign in pro, we wouldn't have that ability, or I guess that would be one of my questions, but let me just go through the rest. And then, um, on the affordability, if what we're talking about is, uh, really pressing for significant state investments, I'm all in for that, right? Earlier, we talked about the fact that, you know, the market isn't gonna build it alone. We don't have enough money to build it alone, so, um, completely supportive of that. The density near major transit and allowing more of that, so what I'm hearing you saying is the way that's currently worded, it, it actually might create issues where we want to actually densify more, like a TOD, and that language might be a barrier. So, um, thank you for catching that. That's definitely an important part for us. Um, the comment about parking requirements, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Are, are, is the bill saying that we, as a city, can't require, um, more than two parking spots if the lot is more than 6,000? But the delov, the developer can on their own make a choice to put in parking? Is, is that right? So I just want to be really clear. This is just the, the fact that when they go in for a permit, we cannot mandate that thou must put in X number of parking stalls. Is that, is that right?
That, yes, that's correct. That's, that's our read of it.
Okay.
It's the, it, yes, it's limiting what the city can do, but the developer could do more parking if, if they so chose.
Okay. So is that the recommendation here, is that we're letting the market decide or, or something else? Because it says we use a scaled approach and we're recommending a similar approach? I, I don't, I didn't quite understand what that meant. And then my, my last question is, on the minimum zoning requirements, so are we saying that for the ones we want to omit from this 1110, that we're trying, we, we are recommending omitting it for citywide? But that last piece says while allowing cities to permit them in other residential zones? So we're saying that, we're not saying that they wouldn't be permitted anywhere, we just are talking about it not being everywhere. Is that right? I just want to be clear about that. So anyway, those, those were my comments, and then a couple of questions embedded in there, so.
All right. Let me, let me kick that off. And I think, I think I captured all of that, council member. So in, uh, I think in order, I think you've got a few questions. Yes, if we took a position of being pro on the legislation, that would, we would have exactly the same seat at the table, and it's, you know, not literally, of course, a table, but we would be able to enter the conversation and provide still constructive comments, seeking amendments if we were pro or other. Uh, fr, frankly, you, you can't, you get also a seat at the table if you're con, but if you express, uh, willingness to engage, uh, in practice, if you're con, you can be kind of pushed, uh, to the side a little bit. Um, that often is the, the practice. And so, uh, the proponents, uh, if you are, if you're against this bill and you're not providing constructive feedback, it sometimes can marginalize how well you're heard or how much traction you can get. So our recommendation would be to be other. Uh, but again, if you're, and, and I'd say the same is a little bit true on the pro side, too. We, you're on board? Okay, got it. You're all set. And so I think with the way we think we get the best toehold or the best responsiveness at this point is to be other, but no, you would get a seat at the, you know, you get a seat at the table, you get to weigh in, no matter what position you establish. But we think, given the level of, uh, desired changes that we are seeking, I, I think we probably are more representative of being an other, but that's a conversation for the seven of you to have. Um, so I hope that is clear as mud. Uh, on parking, uh, I know that, uh, I, we were trying to, without forcing somebody from transportation to be here, which we probably ought to have done. Um, we, I've been boning up a little bit on our parking policies. We take a number of different, um, criteria into consideration when we are setting those, uh, permitting condition minimums for off-street parking. We would want to do, recommend that they do something similar. What that looks like at a statewide level is pretty tough, and that's kind of what we're responding to, is that what's in the bill is pretty, um, it's a pretty blunt instrument. Your interpretation of it and, uh, Mr. Cotterman's clarification is exactly correct. Um, it would not stop a developer from adding more off-street spaces, uh, but it would say that we cannot require above that, um, minimum, uh, for different types of situations and scenarios. But the way that the bill's currently written, it's pretty broad and pretty blunt and doesn't allow for a lot of kind of fine-tuning, um, based on different neighborhoods and what is available, what's naturally kind of, what is the on-street parking situation varies quite a bit from neighborhood to neighborhood. Do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, no, but I'll pick up on the next one.
Okay. Uh, and then in terms of, uh, zoning, I would say, uh, to tee up my colleague, you're, uh, the way you've captured that is correct in the sense that we don't want to preclude, uh, uh, five plexes, six plexes, cottage housing, and courtyard apartments citywide. We don't want to necessarily allow them to be citywide, but we def, definitely want to allow them in certain zones, but not in every residential zone, because again, of the things that Lacey Jane mentioned earlier in terms of, uh, getting to a certain size and getting beyond that aesthetic quality that does not necessarily, uh, fit in as seamlessly or kind of organically evolve in a single-family neighborhood as you know them today. Uh, so again, if we're really trying to keep that ethic of middle housing in mind, uh, we would really say that four would probably be the upper limit of that citywide. Uh, but that those other different uses are absolutely part of the equation, but not in every single lot that is residential.
Yes, thank you. So ju, what I wanted to add to that is that because this is a blanket approach that says citywide, we would have to allow for all of those different types, what we're saying is through our comprehensive plan update, we're already looking at areas of the city where we would introduce middle, um, missing middle housing, and it may be appropriate in a lot of areas, but it may not be appropriate in every area, because we would look at things like what's, what's the transit availability? What are the, what, what's the infrastructure availability in terms of parks, in terms of, um, you know, fire stations and schools and all of those things as well? So when we're increasing the density, when we're increasing the, the density, not just of housing, but of people and areas, we want to make sure that we're taking all of that into account and that we factor that into where we allow for those, um, denser types of housing. So we're not, we're not saying that we wouldn't be looking at that, um, possibilities citywide. We're just saying it may not be appropriate in every single part of the city.
Okay. So it's not omitting it completely just from the notion of citywide umbrella?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this back. Uh, things shows how you are vigilant to watch what's going on, you know, for us, especially in such an important topic. And so also appreciate you giving up your, you know, giving your observation, what's the best way, you know, to reflect the, our Bellevue interest. And, uh, the, one of the thing you mentioned is we want to have a seat at the table, and you said we, we should have a seat at the table. If Bellevue doesn't have a seat at the table, maybe that's the way we want to be. I think, uh, one, I, I believe that we do have influence, uh, because I also, because I believe land use is a local issue. Everybody recognizes that, you know, it's a local issue, because it involves so many different issues, so many different things, so many different aspect, and every city is different. So I think it's important, and the state really can't understand it or can't see it at all, and they don't really communicate with all of us. They do it through us. And I think, uh, the fact that we, uh, have issues with the state law, I think they would appreciate it as we do, right? Because they want input. And these representatives, 41st, 48th, they are from our district, they represent us, so they need to be talking to us. to us. Especially, we have things that we disagree with them. Or we may want to give input. They have to. If they say, we don't talk to you unless you agree with us, well, they are not good representatives. We are not good representatives. We tell our people, say, if you don't agree with me, I don't talk to you. Why don't you listen to you? I don't represent you. That's not right. So I, I believe that we have differences. You pointed out very well. I believe that's the case. And it's very characteristic of the city. And on the whole topic of housing, just, we just went through housing issues. We spend a lot of time on housing. We are doing very well on housing. We are a model of housing issues, thanks to the council, thanks to the mayor, thanks to you guys. You know, we, we look at things we should do. We look at needs assessment. We're not done. We continue to do so. And we don't have questions, we don't have answers to a lot of them. But we have control. We are working on them. They are dear to us. They're dear to all residents. And we know how to figure out, we know how to make sure they address our answers, our differences, our characters, right? We don't know. Some of them don't know until they impact our citizens. But we can be flexible. We can be nimble. We have proven, we can do it. Both either at the level that we are at, and also our ability, our council willingness to do it. We're at the best place to do it. So I believe that we definitely would oppose it, because it doesn't address our issue, okay? And we're not pro, okay? Others, I don't know what others are. There may be other things. You can see, if we bring us some, any others, you know how much time we go through it? How much we have to talk about it? How much the public have to be engaged in? How much you guys are going to go through? And, and it's going to go through different filters, different levels. And I'd rather have it done by us. I'd rather have it done by the city council, rather than by you guys, we're talking to our residents directly. Okay? So to get that attention, to not knowing what's out there, what we are not doing, what we have not done, what's something that's new to us, I think that's going to be another interference, another confusion, another obstacle. So I'd much rather do it ourselves, effectively, knowing exactly what we are, representing our public, and we can address it much more adequately. And I believe this will not detract from being at the table, because I believe they will, they have to listen to us. They will listen to us. You ask our legislators, it's much better to talk to them individually, representing Bellevue as part of a group of people who say, I want this, I want that. We say, yeah, maybe, maybe not. Let's compromise. These, some of these cannot be compromised. I believe we can do it a lot more effectively, a lot more adequately, a lot more representative of the city, city of Bellevue, our neighborhood characteristic, because we have gone through it all. Okay? Thank you. So I would say we should be in the proposed side. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Lee. So I feel like last week, we exhibited our commitment to increasing housing in Bellevue with all the work that we move forward on affordable housing work. And so, very much for that work that we're moving forward. I have some concerns about the legislation as it's written. One is I'm concerned that, about the utility infrastructure in some of our neighborhoods, and whether it's, it can handle, it has the capacity to handle across the board increased density like that. I also know that in the legislation where somebody proposed to kind of do a blanket MFTE legislation that cities like ours, who have, already have a very successful MFTE, they are doing an exception for, they're talking about doing that anyway, so that a city that has, already has a working MFTE program does not have to adopt the state's recommended one. And so, I would hope that with all the work that we're doing to address the needs for more housing, that maybe somehow there's an exemption for a city that has an affordable housing plan and is showing how they're addressing the missing middle housing, which we obviously are missing. I would like, obviously, a more of a focus on home ownership. I think that you make a good case. This afford, you know, this as a solution to affordable housing does not necessarily guarantee affordable housing. It guarantee, it's going to give you more housing, but not necessarily affordable. So I think we need to make sure that whatever we do, we actually get the affordable housing. I think there is a place for five and six-plexes. I love, actually, cottage housing and courtyard housing. I don't know that it's right for every part of the city, so I'd like to be thoughtful about it. I like the emphasis on TOD, increasing density there, but I also want to give people the opportunity to live in a single-family neighborhood if they choose. But again, you know, I'm very interested in home ownership. I like the scaled approach to parking. And so, I think I am, I am supportive of what you're recommending, but I would like to kind of put some of those emphasis, emphases in there.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor. First of all, Lacey Jane and Jenicee and Michael, appreciate you staying on top of all these bills, not just this one, but certainly this one seems to be getting a, a large share of the attention these days. So, got a lot of questions, so I'm not sure I can touch on everything as, as, as the mayor just, just did. But, so, my first and foremost question, I know you've been on some of these calls with the, with the sponsor and co-sponsors of this bill, but has there been any, any data to show that this model, or a bill, or a law like this has been successful in any other city? Not only in terms of creating more housing, but affordable housing?
Not on the calls that I have been a part of. Do you know if there's-
I read the entire bill. I didn't see it anywhere in there.
No, I, I don't think it's in the bill, and it certainly didn't come in, in the meeting that the prime sponsor hosted on Friday. Though she was, she didn't present much to us. It was more of her listening to cities.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it came up in the AWC Housing Solutions Work Group.
It did not, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, okay.
Not, not to our knowledge.
Well, I would assume that the sponsor would, would provide that. So if they didn't provide it, it probably hasn't been, been, been done yet. So, and then, I share the, the mayor's concern about the, the, the infrastructure in place to accommodate this type of density. So, do we know that we could even accommodate this if this bill were to pass tomorrow? Do we know what the impact would be to our infrastructure?
I don't think we currently have an estimate of whether or not we could, like if we stamped our fingers and that, all of that potential additional housing units would show up. I don't know that we could accommodate that, one way or the other. I know we are better equipped than, than some of the other cities that have been expressing concerns.
Sure, sure.
Do you have, yeah?
That is one of the things that we're looking at through the comprehensive plan updates, because we're doing the different growth scenarios. We will look at our infrastructure at a, more of a macro level. We're not going to look at, you know, each individual area in terms of pressure zones and things like that, but we will look at the infrastructure overall and see where we can best accommodate those increases in density.
Okay. Again, looking at the, the, the sponsor of the bill, has there been any analysis on the environmental cost to this? Obviously, that's of concern to, to the residents of this city. We just passed our ESI. We've got a tree canopy goal of 40%. Do we understand what the potential impact could be to our city? And then, also, for those cities that I've weighed in, either as other or con, what, are there any other concerns that you're hearing, other than the ones that you've, you've mentioned already? Is there anything, any, anything else that we should be aware of that you've heard from other cities, either on the other or con side, that you haven't mentioned already? And then, finally, what does this process look like going forward? If we do move forward with the other, what does that process look forward, or look like going forward? Would you be coming back to us? Would we simply just try to massage this bill per the, the four items that you messaged there and, and, and hope for the best? Or, or are there other actions that we might take? And then, lastly, I'll say, you know, if there was an exemption, that if a city did have an affordable housing strategy like we do, that we are taking middle housing very seriously like we do, that, that a city like Bellevue should be from exempt, because it is something that we're taking very seriously. We're understanding that there is a housing crisis, but as Councilmember Lee so eloquently said, we understand Bellevue best and, and how to achieve those goals. And, and we don't necessarily think that a blanket approach that might work in some cities, but not all, is necessarily the, the, the best approach. So I'll stop there, because I gave you a ton of questions, and I'll let you answer some of them. Thank you.
I will, I will kick us off. I, to your first question around the data about how effective this type of policy approach has been, I don't think I've seen any data to that end, but that's something that we can look into. And actually, I know, I've got a conversation with one of the proponents on the calendar later this week. That'll be a great question to ask them. And then, in terms of capacity, I think Mr. Cottman for Utility Systems, Mr. Cottman has talked about how that we're going to look at that very comprehensively, in the comprehensive plan. And you raised a very good point about the environmental impacts. Some of the other cities raised similar concerns on the stakeholder call that was conducted on Friday in terms of critical areas, water quality, tree retention and canopies. Some of those other issues were raised as well. Shoreline, substantial development permits, a lot of those things. Those eventually bleed from the policy area down into some of the implementation details, but those were raised by multiple jurisdictions on the call on Friday. In terms of other concerns from cities, I rattled off about a half a dozen of those earlier. I'm trying to think if I missed any of the other larger concerns. Can you remember any of the other ones that we've missed?
You got all the ones on my list.
Okay. There, what I would say is it was, it's been interesting to me that the issues have, there's been a really kind of complex, like a word bubble, or like a Venn diagram of the same, the same issues come up, but not in the same places. And so, there's been a really interesting diversity of concerns and opinions and implementation worries from across the state, interestingly. And then, to your last two items around next steps, and actually, let me hit the very last one before that, which is whether or not there is an opportunity for us to be exempted, or kind of have, have substantially checked the box per this legislation. There is a part, and I did mention it briefly in passing, there is a part of this legislation that talks about when a city is found to have adopted regulations that are substantially similar to the requirements of the act. I know, as exam, that's the right face. I know, I'll say that, for example, the city of Tacoma recently had a very robust conversation around how to add far more housing to their, and affordable housing to their planning program, and did, decided to go much bigger in some areas and smaller in others. They're in that other category as well, really saying, we need a better definition of what it means to be substantially, have done something substantially similar, because they don't want to unravel the work that they just did in talking with their neighborhoods, in talking with potential new neighbors. They feel like they've struck the right balance and accomplished the same macro level, to borrow a phrase, macro level objectives, without having to do the same number of minimum units per every single lot. And so I think that's part of what we want to ask for as a part of this engagement, is to say, hey, maybe it's not the exact same number completely citywide. And because we're already well underway with the comprehensive plan, it's possible, there are, as other councilmembers have pointed out, some inconsistencies and some kind of holes in this legislation. There are some issues around timing of adoption. It's possible that you will have adopted through your comprehensive plan and through, say, the Wilberton-Luca, you may have already checked the box substantially, again, by the time this takes effect, or at least by the time some of the sections take effect. And so getting some clarity around what it would mean to be able to get the nod from Commerce to say, yes, this city, it did what it needed to do in order to satisfy the objectives here, even though it didn't do it at four, five, or six units per lot. It achieved it through other means. We want more clarity on that, and I think we're, we would be in good company with other cities who are saying the same thing, which is, we did it our way, because we know our neighborhoods and our community, but we're all about the goals. We're all about trying to get to the future more quickly and in a way that makes sense for our context and aesthetics. And I think the last point that you raised around next steps, we, this legislation, this year, because it is a longer session, appears to have some runway ahead of it. So what we would do, if we get direction from you, is continue to kind of weigh in aggressively and substantially on both the House bill and the Senate bill, as long as they're living. That doesn't mean we get just one bite at the apple. That means that if we get some amendments, say in the Policy Committee, we can raise similar concerns when it gets to a Fiscal Committee. Means that we can also talk to members about making amendments on the floor. And then, most comprehensively, if there really grows to become a critical mass of cities who are saying, we really need this bill to be better. We want this bill to be better. We really hope that we can get the proponents of the legislation and their colleagues to go, hey, look, this is not working in its current form. If you want my vote, I need it to be better. And so that's really what we're hoping to accomplish. And that is a long process. At, probably at some point, one of these two versions will go away. They'll probably, as they often do, they don't usually let both companions make it all the way to the end of session. They say, okay, it's going to be, this is going to be the vehicle. And that one, you did a great job, and we're going to set that one down. Because the calendars are, just like your calendars are tight for efficiency, they'll do that. But we want to continue to make, as long as this bill's alive, we want to make it achieve Bellevue's objectives and priorities, and work for you, because it will come home at the end of April, or when it gets, you know, when, or if it gets signed by a governor, it will come here to be implemented. So we want to make, we want to help control that destiny and that future, instead of let other people weigh in on our behalf. We want to help be more actively engaged in doing that. Did I miss other pieces?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. So, first, I probably lean more towards con on this, only because it is taking away local control. As I said in the last agenda item, we need more housing. I am absolutely committed to making sure Bellevue has the housing we need. But we know better than people in Olympia who may not even live in King County, or have ever been to Bellevue, what we need to do to achieve the housing goals. So I absolutely join the mayor and deputy mayor in looking for something that would give a safe harbor, an exemption. One idea might be, not the safe har, safe harbor, it wasn't a safe harbor, last, of the bill last year, but one that is a reasonable, just for those that haven't heard me opine on this. The safe harbor of 33 units, you forgot the word gross in the slide. It was 33 units per gross acre, which includes roads, includes parks, it includes wetlands, it includes critical areas, it includes everything, not even housing, residential land. It would result in us having to plan for 1.5 million people in the city of Bellevue, the safe harbor that they offered last year. It was, I think it was promoted by people who don't understand what a gross acre is, or who can't do math or both. So, having some sort of exemption that is real, where cities are planned for and have zoned to meet their growth targets, and have an affordable housing plan, something like that, that would be a real exemption. And I would absolutely support us pushing that. Although I lean con on this, just because of local control, I understand there's a lot of value for having people try to earn us to the pro side. So being on other, and not having us write us off as, oh, they're just opposed. So I, I can get behind coming in as other. Now, as to your four issues, or the four directions you wanted to address, I want to opine on those and add a couple of more. One, number one, I'm totally in favor. I think that there is a time and a place for six-plexes plus cottages plus, but a one-size-fits-all is pretty difficult. So allowing us to put those where needed is, is much more appropriate approach. Number two, on the density near major transit, I think that we should look for potentially amending the bill for a safe harbor on this, where if there's a density of X units per net acre around transit, with the half-mile walk shed, not the half- around transit with the half-mile walk shed, not the half-miles of crow flies. I think that that would be great because this body, both inside and outside of our chambers, has advocated for more than a decade to not have upzoning, for example, in the Mercer Slough or on Anatai or the Single Family Neighborhood at, sorry Downs, which is covened anyway to one unit per lot at any rate. But having, but I would guess that the density, now the one that's just a station that's a park and ride, is different. But having a density average around the stations, I think would be great. And I think we could easily meet, meet something that's four or six units and, four or six units per lot because we have much greater density planned around our stations. So something like that. We also need to make sure that we consider critical areas. We can't, we're not gonna start putting high rises in the Mercer Slough. That's the largest wetland in King County, probably in western Washington. So, and then also on the frequent transit, I think the definition is a little overly broad. I'd like to see a heat map that takes into account the future light rail stops. I know that, Jenicee, you dug up one that King County had put together a year ago. I don't know that this has the light rail stops in it, and I know that we did one. So if you could provide that, I think that it would be helpful for the council to see it. But it could also be something that we use in our lobbying efforts. Showing, hey, look, if you measure it this way, it's like seventy-five percent of the city. If you measure it, you know, quarter mile or half mile walk, as a person walks, it's this much. You know, and it just might show the impacts because I don't know that they realize the impacts. And the frequent transit seems to be four, four buses, buses an hour during the workday. Seems like a little bit not so frequent transit. So where there's, where there's really frequency in short headways and it's running, you know, almost twenty-four seven, I totally get it. But the four buses an hour, which may go to all different places, I don't know that that really is frequent transit. On the parking, I, I agree with some of my colleagues about the concerns. The, there's a couple of issues here. First of all, we had a study, I think a year ago, where it showed that people who are of lower income own cars at actually a higher rate than people of a higher income as far as the number of cars. They need them to get to work. They need them to get their kids to where they need to go. And so I think assuming that just because someone can't afford market rent, that they don't need a place to put their car is really pretty discriminatory. And it also doesn't consider street parking. There are places in Bellevue where we have ample street parking, and there are places in Bellevue where we have no street parking. So, and there are some where it's very, very limited. So I think we need to be able to have more of a say on that. And yes, developers can build more, but it affects the performer and the bottom line so much. For the most part, they won't. So I'd like to be able to have more say. I appreciate the affordable housing, I don't need to comment on that. To your four, two of which I opined on, I'd like to add, critical areas, impacts on infrastructure, including the need for funding from the state. There are cities in the, in the state of Washington who will be subject to this that have no sewer. And they'd have to put fourplexes on lots with no sewer. And they can't, who can afford to build the sewer trunk line down there? They just can't. So, or they have no storm or water. And again, number seven, we need a reasonable safe harbor or an exemption. Because I think Bellevue's doing pretty much everything right, although maybe not as fast as we would like. But we're doing a lot of the right things that this goal is meant to get to. So we don't need the legislature telling us exactly how to achieve the goals because we are bought in on the goals already. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Any?
Any response, that's fine.
Oh goodness, I don't think so. I think, I think I took really careful notes and will compare with my colleagues. But I think you, I think everything you've covered was pretty straightforward, honestly. And we'll try to get an updated map from King County and from Sound Transit that shows of current and projected light rail.
Yeah, and, and same thing with the infrastructure.
Yes.
I think that that information's gonna be really important. And Bellevue, Bellevue does our infrastructure probably more funded than a lot of places. So if we can't do it, many cities definitely can't. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I think this is. It's been a very good conversation on this. It is a complex, complex matter. I had a couple of things just to start off with. What is the actual state authority over cities zoning? We're having this thing of, you know, and you have, somebody came and testified and said, you know, this state can't tell us to do anything on zoning or whatever. And this, this, my opinion is that this legislation will not violate any impose anything that's not part of the state law and the zoning. Zoning is not, just saying the city has total control of it is not the way it works. And the reality is, we're doing a lot of things, but we're not doing, I mean, they're all within the scope of things. I don't, I don't think that's a real concern in terms of what the state's gonna say to us and all that. It just, and it's difficult, and yes, everybody wants to do it like this, and we're, we're special. We're the only ones that know how to do this in our neighborhood. The fact of the matter is, there's a lot of similarity, and this is, we're all together. So that's, that's, and I'm glad that we're not really putting our, all our, you know, chips on that particular piece to fight it because you can't tell us what to do. I think that's just a, and it really doesn't help Bellevue in terms of saying, we're doing things. It's gonna basically say, well, you don't want to do things, so you want to hide behind this. So I, it's, hopefully not get bogged down in that particular piece. But I thought it was interesting, the context of the other cities in this, in the first chart, that showed the ones who want to go forward are doing a lot of things. And it's mostly bigger cities and cities who have, and like Bothell, who has made tremendous advances recently. And a lot of those have a lot of the same goals that we have, so. And the, the ones who want to do other, I think is the, which I agree is the right to go. And we can make some substantial changes in this. The ones who don't want it, you look at them, and they're mostly small cities who are just now, in the last few years, have had pressure, and they're having trouble, and they, they don't want to, it's a change. It's like if we were back fifteen years ago talking about this. So I think we're, we're in a good spot, and I, I think the recommendation for other and a number of things that have come up, I think are good to see if we can get those into it. I liked Councilmember Robertson's comments about better and more flexible areas and the, the whole issue of, when you think about the Mercer Slough and all that, they, they're not looking at this in a broader context. But, and I, and I think it's, it's important for us to address these issues and try to make changes in this that will help what we're doing. But the reality is, we're doing great, but there's a lot of room, a lot of things we need to do more on. And this will give us a, a lot of opportunities to actually take action that we may have trouble doing right now. So I think that we can get this to a point where we're not having the state tell us what to do, but they're putting parameters that are rational and that are, should be applied in the rest of the state. And I, I have a real difficulty of saying, let's get exempted from this as if we're something really special and we know what we're doing and leave us alone. But yeah, we want money when you're ready, when the state wants to do some things. I just think it'll, it'll put us in a place where people say, well, it's Bellevue playing this thing, and we're, we're exceptional again. We can stay within it. We need to work with people in the region, and I think the focus is to make positive changes to what's going on. I think you've made, you know, good strides on that. So, I think some of the things that, again, Councilmember Robertson added into this to look at, and particularly, again, on the topography and all those things. It's, it's more complex, I think, than what the, the legislation sets up in a sense. But I think we can show both leadership and we can do a better job if we work with this, make changes, and have the, the, the power of the whole group working together. And I think when it comes to funding, we'll be in much better state than if we play this game again, well, you know, leave Bellevue alone. So I think we're, we can, and you're helping really maneuver us into that. And we do have a great program, but we know we're not perfect, and we know we've got a lot of things to do. And if the state can do something that helps us in making changes where we don't have to have battles that are not necessary, that this is, this is the way it's going. This is the, historically, and the way that the consensus is, we need to do certain things within the state. It helps us, actually. Being, trying to go along and saying, we're better than everybody else, we, we have it, we're perfect. Don't leave, you know, exempt us. I think that is a negativity for Bellevue in the long run. So I think this gives us a lot of opportunity to work together, but if we can mold this a lot better in the way we've been working on it, I think we'll come off very well on this. And we're working with all the cities. I mean, you know, we've been working with, for, what am I trying to say? The, with the, you know, the homeless issues, and we've been working with the affordable housing issues with the cities around us. And we could have taken this and said, well, just, we'll just do our own thing, and that's not the best. And so I think we, we, we learn more and we do better when we're working together. But we are the leaders, and we, this will keep us really focused on that. And it may give us a lot more resources in the long run. So I, I really appreciate that we're going to stay in the other, try to make, make, make changes and lead, lead the cities to get a better package. And I think that's what you're doing.
Thank you. So I heard some pros, I heard some cons, I heard some other. I think we'll do a motion for other, and I really like what you said, that we could come to pro if we, you know, if we saw some positive changes, because this is a compelling legislation. I think we're all in agreement that we need to be moving forward in this direction. So, Deputy Mayor?
Okay.
After listening to everybody, I'd like to give my last two cents worth. Thank you. I agree with what Jenicee said. We need to be aggressive on this. It's a very important subject. As you can see, it's controversial, the state is divided, right? And some are good, some are, some questions, even we agree, a lot of questions. To be aggressive means you have to give clear and strong message. We have supporters in the state legislature. It's not unanimous. And these, even when they are unanimous, they need to listen to what people have to say. And if you tell them, if we kind of, like you said, say something that's clear as mud, it doesn't help. We have to be clear, okay? Have to strong, this is what we believe, this is where we are. That will get the attention. We already have friends who understand that. There are legislators who have said, we want to leave, you know, things to the local jurisdictions. The state legislature, just you look at the big pictures, whatever the legislature can and should do. But details, like we're talking about at this table, it's us. So I would still support, no, not because we don't want to work with them, not because we want to be collaborative, not because they have no good ideas. Absolutely no. They have good ideas. Especially when Mr. Stokes said, when we need money, we can go after them. You know, so, but we need to, however, be real and be aggressive. We need to be clear and strong in our message, and that's the only way we can deliver a message, is say, no. And please find out why. Let's talk. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Anybody? Oh, we'll just go all the way around, so we'll start with you, Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you. I was just skipping back through it again. I think for utilities, there's an exemption at the moment in the, in the bill that cities for, if, who aren't able to meet the utilities requirements have five years, along with a plan of action.
That's right. There's a, a process to get an extension.
An extension, sorry, an exemption. Okay. And I know we don't have time to do this, but I am really curious about what it would look like in terms of housing, production, potential, estimated, I guess, as written versus with the changes that we're asking for, right? Because, and not just for today, right, but like for the projection. You know, I, I guess what I struggle with when it comes to keeping it just local, if you will, is we've had how many years to do this, given the population growth? And I get, you know, not wanting the state to, to regulate, you know, at the local level on land use, but I just, we, as we heard earlier, the gap is widening in terms of income and affordability, right, and so forth. And so I guess, I do think there's some need for the state to take action in this case. So I understand the need to, to have the conversations. I just want, I would just say, I'd just really like for us to figure out how we move forward in a way that acknowledges that sometimes we do need the state to, to move us along. Yeah, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
I too appreciate hearing from my colleagues about the nuances and some things we need to focus on. And, and I would agree that we want to look at making sure that perhaps in the affordability piece that we, in the comment, include a sentence about funding for infrastructure. Because I, I do believe that over time, when Bellevue is seen as being a good partner, where we are delivering on the jobs and housing and looking at equity, that we're able to get funding from Move Forward Washington on, on our transportation needs. So that trans, so as a, as a growth corridor, as a growth city, that we are actually getting infrastructure funding to support the work that we're doing. And we would want to continue to accentuate that, that need in order to support the affordable housing, actually both housing and affordable housing that we need to put in. And yet, we've seen in our housing needs assessment that we just heard, that the, it's a widening gap, and it's actually not getting better, it's just getting worse. And so while I appreciate hearing from my colleagues about the, we can do it ourselves, we do see some headwinds when we try to move forward with some of the policies that, as Councilmember Barksdale says, we've been talking about some of them for many, many years. So I would just caution that, yes, we want to make sure that the bill is crafted in a way that, from an implementation standpoint, we don't end up running into issues. So being thoughtful about critical areas and how that's viewed. As we look at the buildable part of the, of the lots, absolutely. But when we talk about tree canopy and aesthetics, I mean, I believe that the architects are very, very innovative and smart about how they can deliver in a way that has the aesthetics and the form that still fits the character of neighborhoods. We need to empower them to do that. So when I think about grandfathering, I would want to make sure that we're actually holding ourselves accountable for building the, to the, the urgency of housing and affordable housing. So if we're talking about creating some kind of a grandfathering, then how do we make sure that our city, which is the fifth largest in the state, are actually building so that we, we talk about jobs and housing balance? And this is a huge part of that. So I would just caution about diluting the bill to the point where we're actually not moving forward with the housing. Because these are, these are potentially our, our children, our children's children, the, the people that are making our lattes. And so, you know, they're, they're real people, and I think that we want to be thoughtful about how we are as inclusive as possible as a city. So, thank you.
I have nothing more to say. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. No, really appreciate the conversation, a lot of good points tonight. I vastly back and forth about other or con. I have to, I'm leaning more on the con side right now rather than the other just because I feel, I feel like we need to make a bigger statement. And that with other, it's somewhat tepid that we're almost there, but, you know, maybe you can consider these one or two amendments. And as Councilmember Robertson just did, listed off at least seven or eight that I, I just don't think we'll get there. Maybe we will if we come out as the fifth largest city saying, we have got some major issues with this bill. And if you want our support, we're, we're gonna have to get some, you know, roll up our sleeves and get some work done. So, you know, for, we all agree we have a housing crisis. We all, and we've done great work at addressing affordable housing and our strategy and the middle housing, but just really concerned about the impact of the character of our neighborhoods, the, the, the cost to our infrastructure, the overcrowding of neighborhood streets. And really, a lot of this comes to my first question, where's the data that shows this is going to have an impact? There is some data, by the way. Some of this has been done in New York and some other cities. Had no significant impact, and especially had no significant impact when it came to the cost of housing. None. of housing. None. So, well, what I really don't want to see is a four-part process where we see demolishing a single-family homes, right? Homes that could go to families or other people, you know, the, almost some of this, um, organic, um, affordable homes we were talking about earlier, cutting down all the trees and the greenery on that lot, cementing over the lot, and then all of a sudden there's four townhomes selling for a million dollars apiece. Is that really going to achieve our goals? And for those that are concerned about McMansions popping up around, around town, well, what about that? How are we gonna feel about that when that starts, um, jumping around the city? And believe me, there will be a lot, I mean, if you thought your property was valuable before, well, wait till the developers start coming to you and say, hey, we're gonna put, you know, a fourplex on her, on here or a sixplex. Now we're talking some really big money, and that's going to be hard to say no to that. And, uh, you know, Mike, you made a really good point earlier about the aesthetics piece. We cannot, this is really for, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like this is really a rubber stamp, will have very little that we can do as long as it meets some of the requirements there. And the aesthetics, we can't change unless we change the aesthetics for the entire neighborhood or the entire single-family housing. So we have very little control here. So this is what really, really concerns me, as well as the, the, the local control. And I want to work regionally, and I think Councilmember Stokes makes a good point there. I want to be a good regional partner, but only if it meets the interests of the residents of the city of Bellevue. And I don't think that meets this standard right now. So, right, right now, I'm leaning towards, uh, a con in this, because I really feel like, again, we need to make a stronger statement here. They need to know that it's the fifth largest city in the state. They need to come and work with us on some of these real core issues that we have issues with that could dramatically impact what this city looks like going forward. Because we believe in a balance, a balance of, yes, we want to grow, provide density, provide affordable housing, but not at the expense of the negative impact to our neighborhoods. Those people that have earned and saved, like myself, for many, many years, because I wanted to live in Bellevue, but I couldn't afford to live in Bellevue until I did everything I could to put myself in a position where I could finally get there. And then when I get there, I'm not sure I want a sixplex right beside me. Um, so I think these are things that we need to think about and think about what residents see their neighborhood and see their city growing. So, um, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. Um, you know, Bellevue has grown. We've grown, we've added seventeen thousand-plus housing units in the last twenty years. We've added almost fifty thousand people in the last twenty years. We are growing and we are planning for it, and we are delivering housing units. Well, we need to do more, I acknowledge. Um, and I share a lot of Deputy Mayor's concerns. That said, I think the smart thing to do is to weigh in as other. I would, as I've listened to everyone, I've heard some overlap from three, at least three, if not four, council members, which is, um, which would be if we weigh in as other to include all of the issues that the staff had said, as well as to include critical areas, infrastructure impacts, an exemption or a reasonable safe harbor, and state funding for infrastructure and affordable housing. So if we, when we do get to the point of the motion, um, if, and I'm happy to make it, if it's made as it's written in the desk, uh, or in the agenda memo, I would like to add those four items, uh, as our comment letter, because I think that that more accurately captures the communication and the discussion we've had up here on the dial.
Can you repeat what those four additional items are?
Okay, well, if I was gonna make the motion, I would read what's in the agenda packet, but then also add, and, um, critical areas, infrastructure impacts, creation of an exemption or reasonable safe harbor, and state funding for infrastructure and affordable housing. Those are the four things I would add to the motion that I think should be in our comment letter. Because as, as a couple of my colleagues up here who are much more on the con side, we have some serious concerns about this agenda, or about this bill. I think it's gonna move this year. We need to make it palatable, not just for Bellevue, but for all cities, um, so that we can all, we all need to be part of providing housing. But we need to do it in a way that's responsible and recognizes what is and the costs thereof.
Is staff able to, no, excuse me, is staff able to weigh in on the pros-cons impacts of adding those four?
My two cents, and I'll let everybody kick me under the table if I stray. I think those would be welcome additions to a comment letter. The one, uh, clarifying point, uh, that I would make is that there, uh, the third issue around a safe harbor or a reasonable exemption is already in the bill. We would be asking for them to, uh, as Tacoma is, to make that much more clear about what that is. So it's not just to make sure everybody understands. We would not, you know, be showing up asking for an exemption for Bellevue. It would be just looking, working with that existing section of the bill to really help cities understand, how do I get there, right? If I want to do it my way and I don't want to do it exactly the way in the bill, how do I do that? And give me some, some better certainty about what that looks like. Is that fair?
So that would be more like clarify safe harbor?
Yeah, clarify. And, and frankly, I think that it should be, it needs to be broadened so that the outcome, as far as unit count, is, is the same.
What I heard you say-
But how we do it is-
Yes. What you said earlier that I thought was interesting, where to go, uh, is, duh-duh-duh-duh, hold on.
Like meeting our, oh, we're on track to meet our growth targets.
You talked about, um, earlier, uh, that we could, you could add some additional substance to what that might look like. We have, uh, we are planning for and have zoned for our housing targets or our population targets, and we have an affordable housing plan. You started to enumerate some things that, if put together substantially, are substantially similar to what they, we could, we can work to figure out what that exactly looks like. But I think that's what we're trying to find out, which is what is the formula of components? Not just, um, procedurally, but substantively-
Right.
-that are, that are equivalent to what the objectives of this legislation. We're not trying to get out of the legislation. We're just trying to add the components together in a way that does it in, in a kind of customized format for our city, which is, I think, what Tacoma, sorry to keep mentioning them, is trying to do.
No, I think that that's exactly right, because we don't, we may not necessarily meet it by the fourplexes everywhere, but we might meet it by greater density around our transit stops. Fourplexes some places, cottage someplace, you know, you, you, you get me.
What was your fourth recommendation?
Um, it was critical areas, infrastructure impacts, uh, sussing out the safe harbor or exemption. And fourth, state funding for infrastructure and affordable housing. Because I, I've heard, I think I heard at least five council members talk about, we need more money for infrastructure, we need more money for affordable housing. So I think that that should go in there. If, you know, if they're gonna impose something on us, it should come with some money.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Stokes, and then I will take a shot at this too, because I did not previously. Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, I appreciate, um, my colleague, Councilmember Robertson, and, um, I mean, Robbins, Robertson?
Robertson.
Robertson, one of those two.
Both of them.
Both of them. Um, no, I think this has, this has been a great conversation, and the, and this issue of, you know, Bellevue doing alone or Bellevue exemption and whatever, I think that that's, I can understand that, but I think that by taking this approach, and I, I agree with all that Councilmember Robertson has said, and I appreciate that. And I think, um, and I think there's some, you know, some good, putting us in a good position. This is a great opportunity, actually, to, for Bellevue to be a leader and to show people what we, what we're doing and how to do it. We go off by ourselves, it's kind of, it's not, doesn't sound good. Uh, and I think we have a lot of, uh, we have the ability to do it in a, in a way that does not negatively affect us. And these, these additions, they help a lot. And I think when we look at the other cities, it is interesting that, uh, I, I think enough cities are gonna be working together on this, even the ones who want to go ahead pro. They're gonna appreciate this, and we'll work with them. And I think it's gonna pass in one way or the other anyhow. But I think we can have a greater impact by doing this, as we're talking about this, and adding these pieces in there. And, uh, and I, I hope that it will engender some other cities to say, okay, let's, let's work this and be a little more, have some flexibility and have some, some clear, uh, goals on this that are much more effective. I think it's gonna add a lot to it if we come forward with this approach. And I appreciate, you know, your, uh, approaching this and talking about this right at the beginning and figuring this out. So I'm very happy with, uh, our, our resolution on this, if this is what we do. And I think, um, I think we will, uh, end up with this and, and giving us something we wouldn't, I don't think really expected we would ever quite get something that, this powerful in the long run, that will help us in this. We need to use, to, to allow the, the state and others to help us get somewhere. And sometimes you do that by being cooperative, be, working with them, and, and being in a place where you have a voice instead of being off in, in the wilderness by yourself. So I, I'm, I'm very happy with, uh, coming to this resolution of this and, and going forward.
Thank you. Um, the one thing that, uh, if we were to adopt Councilmember Robertson's recommendations, I would like to, on that fourth bullet point, if, if the council agrees, state funding for infrastructure and affordable housing, homeownership, affordable home ownership.
Including homeownership?
Including, yeah, mm-hmm. And just to be clear, you know, um, I am all for creating more affordable housing for people. It's very clear, on the spectrum of what we have and what we need, there's a huge hole. But I like to have the flexibility to work with your, you staff to figure out how we best do that in Bellevue. And I think that we have, we're a unique city, every city's different. And I think Tacoma is, is a, a leader, and they are also trying to refine this legislation to work for them too, because they've done so much work. But, you know, we have so many oppor- opportunities in Bell Red, in Eastgate, in Wilberton, and in our neighborhoods that, um, we need to be hitting it at every, every way we can, and as soon as possible. And I, and I, I have confidence that we're gonna do that. I think that we're a very different city than we were ten years ago. And I know that, and I, you know that too. Oh, gosh, not again. Oh, my lord. We'll have to go around again. Okay.
Why? Not necessarily.
This is a very important topic we're talking about.
Yes, it is.
I think a different position.
Okay.
So I appreciate, uh, recommendations and what, uh, Councilmember Robertson mentioned. And we heard Mayor didn't just add something. And I heard Deputy Mayor said a number of things. I mean, I can't even keep track. I can't take notes fast enough. And I've heard others that express opinions. And I haven't really said anything specific or too many of them. You know, if I had to, I'd probably come up with a bunch of them, you know, pros and cons, or amendments, so on. We have heard a lot of things. We're still talking to the staff. We're still working on the housing situation. We're still maybe coming through. We haven't talked to the public yet, because they haven't even talked to, they haven't listened to us. We haven't told them what we're having in mind. All these things are good, I believe. However, you know, what we're doing today is we're giving all that up to say, okay, we'll go along with you guys, state legislature. If you just tell us, we'll go along with it. That is not what we're here for. Here is, we want to do the best we can, right? To give us the opportunity to collaborate, work with the state legislators, work with other cities, work with ourselves, with our staff, you know? We just don't tell you what you to do, and we just cover maybe one percent, two percent. It doesn't matter. We, right now, you know, agree or disagree. We haven't even talked about, how can we disagree or agree? Or just listen to it and then react instantaneously. We can spend all kinds of time talking about, Jeremy Barxale brought something, you know, talking about equity. Janice, we, we all have, okay? So my thought is that we need to get to the table and talk to the state legislature, because they are proposing something that we, they, they want us to support. And we are telling them, no, we cannot support it because it's not complete. It doesn't reflect all what we want, based on our limited discussion, just in one, one evening, one session. So to do that is, we have to be at the table, like you said, to be at tables, to tell them, we want to talk to you because we disagree. Not just, we'll go along with you. However, can we do this? Can we do that? No. Has to be aggressive, clear message, strong message. But doesn't mean we don't talk to you. No. State legislatures are looking at us, they say, well, you, you don't even really mean what you want. You say, yeah, we'll go along with you. So what else is there? How do we follow up? That's the point. You know, we have to really be working together. To do that is, we have to say, let's get together real, because we disagree. I mean, clear message. So I, I, I would propose, if, if I can be allowed, I will, I will move, I will move, if there's a second, to say con, to say no to the state legislature's proposal. With a big, big request, we want to work with you. We want to talk to you. We want to discuss what's the best way to accomplish your goal and our goal and every other city's goal. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
No, I already made a motion.
No, you did not make a motion.
Okay, I like to make a motion.
But I'm gonna ask Deputy Mayor to make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, my bid to direct staff to weigh in as other on House Bill 1110 and Senate Bill 5190 and draft and submit a comment letter addressing the following: minimum zoning requirements, density near major transit, parking requirements, affordability, critical areas, infrastructure impacts, clarifying language, uh, as it relates to safe harbor and state funding for infrastructure and affordable housing, including homeownership.
Second, oh, second.
Okay. Any more comments or questions on this?
Can I propose a?
You can, go ahead. Excuse me, we're, we're gonna vote on this first, and if it fails, then you can make your next motion.
Only when it fails?
Yes.
What's the Roberts rule?
Yeah, I don't know that you can do a motion over a motion.
I can offer a alternative motion.
If my fails, then you can vote on the main motion.
We have a, um, main motion on the table, and, uh, Councilmember Barxale would like to speak to it, so I'm gonna listen to him first.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess two things that come to mind for me is, uh, I think it would be helpful if we could frame the letter in a way that says we're supportive of the direction, um, even if we're signing in as other, or, I mean, uh, commenting as other, meaning, um, 'cause, I mean, just kind of going back to what I mentioned, in terms of acknowledging the role that the state is playing to help address, um, impacts from historical impacts. And then the second one is, um, I guess I'm curious, is there, I didn't see it, but, and I know there's the model, and if, if something is, doesn't happen, I think it's within eighteen months and the model kicks in, right, um, by the commerce. Uh, what about in terms of performance? So in terms of the amount of housing that's needed, is there any performance monitoring, on a regular, like on an ongoing basis, maybe annually or something like that?
Yeah, I'm, I was just gonna stop for a second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's to debate the motion, not to, you know, ask questions.
Well, hold on, hold on, because he may make an amendment. He's, he's thinking about it. But I want to take your first point, please. And you're suggesting that we, when we direct staff to create a letter, if that's what we end up doing, that addresses the points that we have in our motion, you're asking that we can come in with a friendly tone-
Yeah.
-saying that. And I don't think that that is outside, unless somebody is opposed to doing that. I think that's just part of the way the letter's written. So, um, is there anybody opposed to that?
I, I don't want to get bogged down on that, but a friendly tone is very different than, we're in favor of this bill, but it needs changes. I think we're signing in as other, if that's what the council directs. I think saying otherwise would require an amendment of the motion.
Staff, any comments on that? I mean, uh, I, I think you bring a good point up, Councilmember Robertson. We are coming in kind of neutral, but saying we'd like to get there. So, uh, how do you, how do you word that?
I think you would word it as being supportive of the objectives, uh, not necessarily of the bill, but the policy objectives that motivate the conversation, which are around, finding collaborative, I would actually look at some of our own state legislative agenda language, which is actually pretty good. It says, we want a balanced collaborative approach that embraces adding more housing opportunities, availability and affordability in our city.
Yeah.
I think we can come up with language that doesn't say, we support this bill and we respectfully want a whole list, we have a list of very serious concerns, but I think we say we are supportive of the policy drivers behind-
Which is consistent with what we have approved in our legislative agenda in the past. So, everybody good with that part? Okay, so I think we're fine with that. Your second point is, you're asking if there are gonna be any metrics, and you're thinking about whether we want to include that in some of the bullet points that we're adding?
Right. And the reason is, um, uh, I, I think, you know, given, given over the years- Right. And the reason is, I, I think, you know, given, given over the years that the gap has been widening, I think, and given the objectives of this bill, like being able to monitor and then correct sooner rather than later based on the policy. So, maybe some of these elements trigger based on how things are going with implementation.
Well, I will say that I think that's a very good idea, but I think that our city should be in charge of our metrics, and we can submit them. I mean, there's so many opportunities to weigh in in the Affordable Housing Committee and the, the AWC Affordable Housing. So, I'm not sure that I would agree that we need to include that in this, but I will, if there's somebody else who thinks that we should, Councilmember Stokes?
Well, I just want to say, I think that's something that is important, but I think we will, we can approach that without putting this into the bill and comments. But that's, that is something we, we could, should commit to do that and work with staff.
I agree.
And it's, that's, there's some nuances on that, but overall, that's, that will help us.
Yeah.
It's just not, and, and you don't want it to pop in there and they're, and they start saying, well, Bellevue's trying to, you know, do something. So, it, just keep this clean bill, and then your comments, and definitely make those. I think that's a good idea.
Councilmember Zion, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I did have a comment as well because earlier when we spoke about the safe harbor, I believe Janice used the word substantively equivalent.
Substantially similar is the language in the bill.
Okay. But I, I think in the discussion, we actually used the word equivalent. So, similar is pretty squishy. Equivalent really talks about outcomes that are substantively or substantially equivalent. And I would recommend that when we have the language about safe harbor, that we really put out there what we mean by that, that we have a commitment for substantially equivalent so that we're, we are seen as doing our share on housing, since we're talking about supportive of, you know, policy drivers and objectives.
Okay. Okay, so that is speaking to the motion that's on the table.
Yes, that's the motion on the table because that was part of our conversation.
I get it. I think it should be substantively, not substantially, but anyway, we're wordsmithing here. Anybody have any comments or questions on the motion on the table? Councilmember Lee?
They have made a number of comments on the motion.
Do you know what the motion is on the table?
I don't know.
We've got a motion on the table.
What is the motion on the table?
The motion on-
And then I would like to, you know, subs, propose a substitute motion, whatever.
I would ask-
If you prefer to do that.
I would prefer that since we vote on the motion on the table.
That's not the way it's done.
And if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass, you can-
No, no, that's not the way it's done.
All right.
Please.
We can go into-
And Councilmember Lee can, can move to amend the motion.
I know he can. I was saying, I would prefer.
Sorry.
But anyway, let's go ahead and continue speaking to the motion on the table. And why don't you reiterate what it is, please? I think actually Deputy Mayor, you're the one who made it.
I can reread it.
Okay.
I moved to direct staff to weigh in as other, thank you, on House Bill 1110 and Senate Bill 5190 and draft and submit a comment letter addressing minimum zoning requirements, density near major transit, parking requirements, and affordability, critical areas, infrastructure impacts, clarifying language as it relates to safe harbor and state funding for infrastructure and affordable housing, including homeownership.
And it has been seconded. And so, that's what we're discussing. So, I'm just going to ask before you make your substitute motion, if there's any other comments or questions on this. And Councilmember Robertson, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of the ideas about the safe harbor. I respect the ideas. I would be hesitant to add restrictive language in the letter. I think keeping it a little bit more broad gives our staff and our lobbyists more flexibility in terms of helping craft it and seeing what will happen. They know what we're saying, I think, without adding restrictive language to the letter. So, I, I support the motion as written. And I will vote yes. Thank you.
Councilmembers, on, do you want to make a motion to add that, and we'll vote on it, or are you-
Yeah, I do. I think the reason I, maybe I'm having this visceral response is safe harbor seems to imply I'm safe from this, not my thing. And so, if we're going to use the word safe harbor, I think we should be more clear about the fact that as a condition of that safe harbor, we're committing to something related to equivalency. So, um-
Okay. Why don't you make your motion?
Isn't that in the, in there anyhow?
Currently, I'll say-
What's the word? Is safe, safe harbor?
Right. So-
That's a different safe harbor.
Exactly. So, there are, there are two different components in the underlying legislation. One speaks to how the department, being the Department of Commerce, may approve actions under the section for cities that have adopted permanent development regulations that are substantially similar to the requirements of the act. That's what we want to get some better clarification on. Following that is a second thing that has, in last year's bill, been referred to, kind of sort of as the safe harbor, which says, any local actions approved by the department, blah, 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 to implement the requirements under Section Three are exempt from appeals under this chapter. So, those are, that, there are kind of two different components of this part of the bill. One that says that the Department of Commerce can approve cities that have taken actions that are substantially similar. Again, that's where we're seeking some much greater, you know, what does that look like? How do I do it? How do I, how do I proceed in that direction? And then following that is, for those that have had those actions approved by the Department of Commerce, then they are exempt from appeals. So, they're, they're just right next to each other. But I think what we want clarification of, I'm going to turn to Mr. Cotterman, is that first section, which is around the substantially similar, and how do we, how do we get clarification of that?
So, safe harbor is not actually in the language?
No, the word safe harbor is not in here.
Yeah.
And it's a different term of art. It's typically used under the, more from exemption from appeals.
Right.
So, I, I think maybe if, if we use a different term than safe harbor, and we talk about an, an alternative way to meet the objectives of the bill, is, I think what we're, that's what I'm hearing from the council. I think what we're really trying to address.
So, that would be the amendment I would like to make, is if Mr. Cotterman, you come up with the right words. There, I did have a visceral response to the word safe harbor that could be perceived as conveying that we're just safe from whatever's in this bill, not our problem.
So, yeah, so do you have recommended wording on that second bullet point that we have proposed in this motion?
Do you have something?
Something that we've talked about.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the word guru here because-
I would, I would say, and again, we're going to, we're going to turn all this into a letter, but I would say it is around providing additional clarity-
Yeah, of this section.
Of, yeah, we can cite it. Section four, subsection three B, to give better guidance about what would qualify as development regulations that are substantially similar.
So, I would like to make that amendment of what she just said.
Tell them about regulations. Just admit that or-
I don't think you need to change it.
Substantially similar.
Right.
Okay, I got that down.
It's just there in our conversation.
So, yeah, I think the motion is similar, and I think that we can take the advice of writing it that way from the staff.
Okay.
And so, I don't think we need to actually make a motion and vote on that. I, I've written it down.
We agree. We don't want to have safe harbor in it.
And it's recommended by staff, so that's good.
Thank you.
So, any other, but thank you for your input. Any other comments or questions on the motion that's on the table? Okay, so I hear Councilmember Lee, a little bird told me that you have a substitute motion you'd like to make.
Yes, do. Thank you.
All right.
And the mayor. I'd like to substitute the motion with one that states that the city council of Bellevue would take a composition to this HB 1110, SB 5190.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right.
The only thing I would do extend is that if it's necessary, you know, I would say we would still convey to the legislature, we would appreciate what they're working on, similar goals. We want to collaborate with them, work with them, work through the whole process. It's not a negative thing. It's a positive thing to create better engagement, better involvement, and more effective housing policy.
And you've spoken clearly to the point.
Thank you.
So, we understand that. So, all in favor of Councilmember Lee's substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No? Okay, so the no's have it. So, now we're back to the motion on the table, and I'm going to write down the wording that you recommended. I, I wrote it down, so I'll send you an email. And so, without any more discussion, all those in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, so that passes five-two. All right. I think we are done with our meeting. I thank you, everybody, for the good conversation, and we're adjourned. Thank you.